We are improving on our say, something I'm going to say. It's improving on that end, that's all we think. Long as pretty day in eight months. The only day we could have worked in eight months.
Alright, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Uh, this is a continued session from our, um, January, uh, meeting. And we have a regularly scheduled board meeting, uh, next Tuesday night. Probably one of the most important, uh, it probably is the most important thing we do as commissioners, is set our budget, uh, for the county, and this is our initial budget kickoff. So, I appreciate, uh, all of y'all that have made the effort, uh, to be here on probably the prettiest day we've had all winter.
The only day we've been working in eight months, he called a meeting.
So anyway, I appreciate all of y'all in attendance, and we'll try and make this as, uh, as quick and as painless as possible. So with that being stated, let's go ahead and kick off our mid-year financial review with Lori Hall. Somebody heard from Commissioner Higgin, Derek?
Uh, talked to him yesterday, or the day before yesterday, and he was planning on coming.
Okay. We'll get Roland.
I haven't heard from him today.
Good afternoon.
Good work.
How are y'all? So we're gonna kinda just do the same format that we normally do, just kinda give you a little update as to where we are through the first six months of our fiscal year. We're gonna talk a little bit about sales tax, our property and motor vehicle taxes, our general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, and then debt service.
Hang on a second, Lori, his beeping, do you mind shutting it off?
Oh, it's me, it'll come off. It's my ten minutes, and this beep is the same.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead and work them.
Um, so... Wait a minute, what's this thing doing? Sorry. There we go. So this first slide just takes a look at our sales tax. Um, if you'll recall, sales tax, there's a three-month lag between when the sales taxes are actually collected and then remitted to the county. So, as of, um, December, this only reflects four months of revenues. So this is our July through October retail sales. And, as you'll see, we're a little, a little above 3.6 million this year for the first four months versus 3.5 million last year. At this time, fiscal year 19 is, for these first four months, is a little over 5% higher than last year. But I would also like to note that when you look at fiscal 18 first four months versus fiscal 17, it was actually up 7.19% at that time. So I mean, of course, we're still, still tracking on a good trend, hopefully, and hopefully this trend continues as we move on into the fiscal year. Any questions on sales tax?
Still lagging how far behind, Lori.
Thanks. There's a three-month lag, yes, so that slide I showed you just showed four months of revenue. This is showing all of our tax collections revenues for the fiscal year compared to budget. So this would include your current year taxes, your prior year tax collections, any interest, advertising fees, and attorney's fees. So at this point, our fiscal 19 actuals is about 756,000 more than last year at the same time. So of course, that's a positive sign, positive number, 'cause of course, as you know, for fiscal year 19, the tax rate, you know, remained flat at the 34.9 cents, so that is a good sign that, you know, collections are up about 756,000 over last year, same time. There we go. Um, this, this takes a look at our general fund revenues through December. So this fiscal year, we're at 30.7 million. Last fiscal year, same time, we were at 30.3 million. So right now, the revenue side, we are 367,000 ahead of where we were this year last time. And just to make a note, you see this revised budget number for 19 is at 52.9 million. So this revised budget does include, of course, amendments that have happened between July and December, and is reflective of a million 271,000 of fund balance appropriated, which of course, we started off the year appropriating a million 50 of fund balance. But then the, the other parts come into play, um, at certain point, points in the year, you know, departments have to carry over funds that they might have received last year that must be spent for specific purposes, and, um, things of that nature. Any questions on revenues? And here we just take a look at our expenditures. So we're sitting at 23.2 for fiscal year 19 versus a little over 22 million, same time fiscal year 18. So, this slide shows that our expenditures are 1.2 million more than they were this time last year. So if you take a look at our fiscal year 18 revenues versus expenditures for the first six months of the year, uh, revenues were exceeding expenditures by 8.3 million. This year, our revenues versus our expenditures are only exceeding them by 7.5 million. So that's a difference of about, difference of about $840,000. Any questions on those expenditures?
How much that is insurance, do you know, Derek? How much of?
How much of its insurance? Well, the health insurance fund, the health insurance...
It increased 500,000 in the fiscal year, I'm sorry, the fiscal year, right?
Yeah, but the health insurance fund is a separate fund from the general fund.
It's not the enterprise one.
Well, it's a, it's an agency fund. But yeah, um, we did have to increase our budget by half a million to cover insurance. So this would be reflective, of course, of half a year of those increased premiums that we transferred over to that health fund. But we have not made any kind of one-time contributions to the health fund out of the general fund, as of this point. Um, and then the final slide, I know you guys always like to see, you know, where we are with our, our debt portfolio. And when Mitch with Davenport gets up here, he'll talk a little bit about our debt and debt capacity. But if you can, as you can see in fiscal year 20, we're gonna have a slight increase in payments of $52,000, and that is due to the South Macon loan we issued it in July. And it's semi-annual payment, so we only had one payment due in current fiscal year. And of course, moving forward, we'll have two payments every fiscal year. So that's why you see the slight increase in fiscal 2020. And of course, this is just based on our current debt as it is as, as of today, you know, doesn't take into account, you know, any future thoughts of, you know, issuing, issuing debt, so... But as you can see, of course, it, and as Mitch will talk about more, we, we will have capacity moving forward, you know, as we continue to make our regular principal and interest payments on our outstanding debt. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
2018 year in review and moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, I would also like to thank all the county department heads that are here today. Thank you for coming. As the chairman has alluded to, this is a very important time of year where we begin looking at next fiscal year's budget. And it's an interesting time of year, uh, because we have just got the 2018 audit back. So everybody's looking at the audit. We're, we're looking at what happened in 2018, we're assessing that, and we're analyzing it. At the same time, we're in the middle of fiscal year 19. Uh, we're in the middle of the budget, we got a lot of projects going on, a lot of things happening. So, with that, with each of those things, we're still trying to look out to 2020 and project our expenditures, project our revenues, and put together a budget to head into that fiscal year. It's very hard to put all that in, in a presentation to display to somebody and, and force somebody to follow all that. And I, you know, each year I struggle with, with how to put this presentation together. And happened this year, I fell back on the advice, uh, my grandfather gave me one time. It was actually about reading the Bible, and he's a Baptist preacher. And I said, you know, I asked him, I said, you know, "The New Testament, you read the New Testament?" And I, you know, "We always learn about the New Testament." I said, "So if, if, if all the Old Testament goes away?" He said, "No, no, no, the Old Testament." He said, "Both of them are important." He said, "You have to," he said, "Reading the Bible's like shooting a gun. You have to read the Old Testament, look through those backsides of the Old Testament to really truly understand that New Testament." So, a lot of this i- is, is like that. We have to look first at 2018, then we have to look out there at 2019 and see what's going on in fiscal year 19, and that tells us how we can, that will potentially impact what's going on in 2020. So, using that illustration and following that same logic, let's just look at what happened in 2018. First of all, 2018 was a great year. We received another unmodified opinion on our audit. We saw a slight increase in fund balance that we'll discuss later, which is going to leave us in an even better position as we head in to, and, and complete the planning phase of our capital improvements plan with the space needs analysis, and start heading in to the action phase of that. So, a very critical, uh, time, and, and we saw, again, that slight increase in fund balance will help as we move forward through the planning and prioritization of, of what is a project list that now exceeds $100 million. We completed the Robert C. Carpenter Building, those renovations. If you get a chance to get by there, if you haven't been, it's beautiful, we did a great job. A $796,000 project. We feel like we really saved a lot of money with our maintenance staff assisting with that. We appropriated 350,000 in 18 for the renovations at the Highland Civic Center. We completed our capital improvement plan, and we're actually this year, gonna be talking in a second about some amendments with Mitch here. So, we increased the school's capital outlay budget in 18, and of course, in 19, we followed suit with that. We were able to purchase six new patrol vehicles in 2018 at a cost of $181,000, and put a new roof on the detention center. So, those are just a few of the accomplishments that we had in 2018, but I think the greatest accomplishment is the same as it is every year, and that is our continued ability to provide efficient services, uh, efficient and high-level public services, uh, the way we do. And, and that falls directly back on, uh, the, the folks that you see sitting out here, our school board, um, our, our school system, our department heads, uh, everyone that, that is working together, Dr. Thomas and Southwestern, everyone works together, uh, to gain us these accomplishments through this budget in 2018. If you look at the expenditures, I've broken the expenditures down a little differently here. The blue represents salaries and benefits, and I understand it's pretty small, it's hard to read. Salaries and benefits in fiscal year 18 at 22.8 million accounted for about 49.2% of all your expenditures in the general fund. Your operations here in red was at 10 million, right at. Uh, that's an increase of about 671,000 over the prior fiscal year. Combined together, uh, salary and operation expenses in the general fund total about 33 million. That's about 73% of these expenses in the general fund. Your capital expenditures rose slightly to $658,000, and education here, as we mentioned earlier, is another big one, at 8.7 million. And again, that was a 2% increase over fiscal year 17 levels with that additional capital outlay that we added in 2018. Your total expenditures here increased less than $50,000 in 18 over fiscal year 17. Looking at revenues, the general fund revenues overall decreased by about $305,000 in fiscal year 18. And that's largely, uh, because the childcare, daycare subsidy revenue, which we, was passed through, went away in, in fiscal year, um, 2018 there, so that was not reflected. If you look at your ad valorem tax here, in blue, the ad valorem tax is our most consistent and reliable source of revenue, at 56% of all revenue in the general fund. One thing to note, moving from 17 to 18, ad valorem tax revenue increased by around $2,000. So you're talking about an increase of $2,000 on 28.3 million. That is a very sliding, that is a very minimal increase as we are heading into the revaluation year this year. When you look at sales tax, it's 7.9 million, that's representative of about 15.6% of total revenue in the general fund. We saw, we saw an increase of $541,000 over the, over the, uh, over the 17 amount here. Intergovernmental revenue, again, in green, you're gonna see that go down because of elimination of that childcare daycare subsidy grant from the DSS budget. That was about a million dollars. Getting into the little ones, uh, up here at top, the smaller pieces of the bar graph with the purple here, that's your sales and services revenue. And if you look, this revenue actually declined from 17 to 18 by about $283,000. Why did it decline? We had $100,000 decrease in revenue for EMS ambulance, and that is because of decreased trips to mission and the community paramedic program. That is a great program, and, and, you know, we don't talk about it enough, but programs like that, that go and visit these folks that otherwise are frequent, frequent flyers, um, that utilize the service, um, that are calling the ambulance in the absence of these community medics going out there and checking on them, on a, on a daily, weekly basis, whatever it may be. So that's a great program, um, and, and part of the reason here that, that we saw that revenue decrease. Also, within this category, your health fees decreased by about $100,000. When you move up to the, the aqua blue, I guess you would call it, at 1.2 million dollars, that is your permit fees. And, this is representative of a decrease in, a decrease as well. Your building inspection permit fees were down 16% from 2017 at $413,000. But within this same category, you had Register of Deeds, they had an increase in, in their revenues that they were bringing in by about $21,000 to 630,000. And also here, your occupancy tax increased slightly as well. So, lastly, in, in the, the very smallest columns at the top, one I want to talk about is that, that little orange one up there. And that's at your interest on investments. It has more than doubled since 2017. And again, uh, that goes back to the hard work of Lori and the finance office, uh, where we're putting our money, the, the money that we're gaining. But I want you to also look while we're talking about this revenue and realize that, except for the ad valorem tax revenue, this, this revenue, nothing is reliable, as, as reliable as that ad valorem tax revenue. That 56%. Sales tax, as we know, blip in the economy, um, sales tax can bottom out. Intergovernmental revenue, a- as we know, um, that is dependent on how much money we're receiving from other governmental agencies. And again, you're, like we talked about, the little, uh, interest up there, that escalated, that nearly doubled, that more than doubled, uh, that is dependent on the economy as well. So, getting back to, and, and one thing I want us to take from this is, is the consistency of, of the ad valorem tax revenue. Growth in unassigned fund balance. So, to end 2018, when you take a look at that, we had revenues of 50,500,000, expenses of about 45,001, so we had a total revenue over expenditures of 5.3 million. But of that amount, we transferred 2,949,000 out of the budget. And this is, this goes towards things like debt service obligations, 1.26 million. It goes to things like your, your, your health insurance fund that Commissioner Beal mentioned earlier. $861,000 had to be transferred out at year-end in addition to what we included in the operating budget to make that health insurance fund solvent at year-end. So that's what those transfers are. You get down to, to taking those out, and you get the number that, that was shared with us from the audit of 2,450,000 and $278. What you have to understand here is that within this number, 879,446 of that is gonna be further restricted through stabilization by state statute, your prepaid's and your inventories. So, that is an actual growth in unassigned fund balance from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18 of this 1.57 million. That is what we actually, uh, increased in our unassigned fund balance, undesigned fund balance. And this just reflects that here. Uh, here is 17's audit, and as you can see here, your, your unassigned fund balance in that audit, right here by the yellow flag, was at 21.8 million. And moving into 2018, you see that, that same unassigned number in the 2018 audit, uh, there, 23.3 million. So that is that 1.5 million dollars in growth in unassigned fund balance that, that we talked about. So as we move into 2019, we've looked at 2018, now let's look through the front side at 2019. We, we've put together a budget which is going to enhance our service quality, particularly in the areas of public safety, while simultaneously dealing with rising operational costs that we have seen in our health insurance account, that we have seen in our retirement, that we have seen in the detention center, in inmate transport, all around the board. So a few highlights of this budget includes a space needs analysis. We have had the, uh, engineers and the architects come, they've met with county department heads, they've walked through our buildings, and that project is on schedule. We're, we're running on schedule with that project and hope to have it completed either right, right on or, or shortly thereafter, uh, June, July this year. So that, that is moving forward, uh, and we're very optimistic that, that we'll be completing it soon. And again, those in conjunction are gonna prioritize our most important county capital needs. We've increased funding to education for operations, Lori mentioned, uh, we increased it for operations, capital improvements and technology. Total increase to education was 1,500,000. Some other, we're replacing all, uh, light fixtures in every county building with LED light bulbs that will, uh, pay for itself the first year it goes in effect. So, our maintenance staff, the lights that we ordered have actually been held up, were held up in customs during the federal government shutdown, so that has delayed the project a little bit, but nonetheless, we should be getting them and, and getting started on that project soon. $400,000 has been budgeted to go toward helping us expand broadband in Macon County, and we're still meeting as a committee, and we're still exploring options, uh, through other avenues to enhance broadband service in Macon County. While the services have been enhanced, obligations that, that we have undertaken in the current fiscal year will have a impact on the budget in 2020 in the absence of corresponding revenue. And this, this impact could be dramatic, as we see here, that 5.7 number, or that 1.5 number again, from 2018, that actual growth in unassigned fund balance. When we look at the revenue that is, that comprises that 1.5 million, you can further narrow that 1.5 million dollar number down. We received two times the amount of Medicaid cost settlement money that we were supposed to receive. That is an anomaly, and thus should be taken from this growth in unassigned fund balance. You can't count on that year after year. Furthermore, if you'll recall, in CIP discussions, um, it, previously, one of the parameters of that CIP, one of the thing, one of the funding mechanisms for the CIP was to transfer $300,000 in excess sales tax revenue from general fund to the capital improvement plan. That is a, a crucial funding mechanism for us to navigate through that capital improvement plan, as you're gonna hear from Mitch here in a minute. So, you take that 300,000 off the 541,000 total increase in sales tax revenue, that leaves you 241,000. So, I would contend that the actual growth in unassigned fund balance when considering those two things is 1.1 million dollars. Now, that was in fiscal year 18. Remember, fiscal year 19, what are some of the things we did? We provided a 2% COLA to county employees, that was $400,000. We provided, uh, insurance in retirement, or an increase in retirement benefit, which was passed down to us from the state retirement system. That cost us $40,236. Um, as Mr. Beal mentioned earlier, we increased our contribution to the health insurance fund by $504,000 because we had a 24% rate increase in fiscal year 19 in health insurance costs. In addition to that $504,000 that we contributed, we had employees, um, that are paying family coverage, their cost increased as well. Some as much as 48% in some dependent categories. We also made the decision, um, to, the grant funding that was approved at last meeting for the SROs, uh, two SROs at half a year, um, that's $85,758. That is incurred in 2019, that was not in 2018. That was not, again, a part of this growth that we saw in the unassigned fund balance. You had 300,000 in school technology. Now, in fiscal year 18, this 1.197 number does include 750,000 of the 1.05 million that we allocated to the school system. And it is shown in your audit as, in the fund balance, as assigned for subsequent year expenditures. So, the total fund balance ending amount in 2018 includes 750,000 of that. But, it does not include the 300,000 that we appropriated for schools' technology. That was appropriated from the schools' technology fund. But, that fund has a limited amount in it. Is the 300,000 something that we are going to continue doing operationally? That is a discussion, um, that we'll have at, during this budget cycle, and if so, that's another $300,000 that is going to be needed in operating revenue. Lastly, and the sheriff and Judge Coward, pleased to have him here with us here today, uh, they're gonna be coming up later and talking about courthouse security recommendations. Um, currently, we have in the budget two courthouse security positions for a half a year, that's $55,881. So, when you look at all these obligations that we have incurred in 2019, and look at the, what we had left over from 2018, in the absence of, of corresponding revenue growth, um, we're right there actually, uh, flat, or, or there about, even moving into fiscal year 20. And we know we're gonna have obligations in fiscal year 2020 as well. You know, some of the questions that, that need to be answered and need to be discussed during this budget process, and first and foremost, employee pay grade adjustments. Now, I would like to say that we, this is tweaking, this is not an overhaul like we have done previously, but we have identified, uh, most recently at the health board, a situation where we had to go in and look at, at employee pay grades. Uh, the health board has mentioned specialist positions. You know, what you run into whenever you're talking about a dentist, uh, dental hygienist, nurse, uh, doctor, you're, you're competing there with the private sector. And, and so that was what the health board was saying, we need to look at these specialist position and see if they're graded properly and, and commensurate with, with our competition. So that's just one instance. We have many other instances, and, or... We have many other instances, or not many other, but, but a few other instances in county departments of things like that. In other words, we want to be consistent and equitable across the pay scale. In other words, administrative assistant in health needs to be, you know, looked at as an administrative assistant in another department. You need to have all those, it needs to be a level playing field and equitable across the organization. But we have taken, we completed the pay plan in fiscal year 15, 16, where our pay scale is regionally competitive. We have benefits that we're offering that are second to none. And on behalf of the county employees, I just, I want to say thank you to this board for the importance that you've placed on our employees, because they are the most valuable asset to Macon County, and then they do a great job. Cost of living adjustment, you know, will we be discussing that in 2020? We talked about the importance after we completed the, the pay plan to continue moving folks through the pay plan, through the cost of living adjustment. Health insurance, what I've seen so far this year, health insurance is not going to be as bad as it was last year, knock on wood. The numbers we've seen thus far, we've had a better year. But it's still not a good year. It, it's not anything, as the old saying goes, to write home about. But when, as this year comes to an end, health insurance will be something that is, again, on the radar for us, like it is every other company, public and private, across the nation. Additional employees, you know, those additional employees that we discussed, your SROs, well, not necessarily, the SROs with grant funding, as that dissolves, those operating costs will come on. Your courthouse security, that won't be budgeted at a half a year in 20, in 2020 like it was in 2019. That will increase. DSS is going to be coming, talking about child welfare and employees they need in, in there right now, at, at our commissioner's meeting on Tuesday night. So what, those are just some of the ones that, that we know of right now. And, you know, what other things are going to be uncovered during the budget process? And we'll find that out as we go through it. Of course, vehicles and equipment. We, the, the latest count we have is 292 vehicles. That's not counting transit. Those vehicles have an average age of 12.7 years old. So we have a vehicle fleet that, that is aging, that we need to continue replacing vehicles as necessary. And we also need to, need to look and see how many vehicles are necessary and how many vehicles are not necessary. For the vehicles that, you know, that it makes sense to, to combine or, or to, to serve multiple purposes, we need to narrow it down on that end as well. And we're going to be doing that, working with the garage and transit moving into the 2020 budget. Some other things, the $1.3 million fire safety training facility, we budgeted for that to come out of fund balance in 2018, but it didn't. That is still an expense that is out there and, and will be, we have indicated will be taken from fund balance. That is also going to bring on operational costs with it, that we have also signed on to. OPEB liability, due to a change in Gatsby 75 accounting standards, your, your OPEB liability, they, they've changed the method that it's calculated, that's your other post-employment benefits, that is providing retirees health insurance after retirement and carrying that forward. That liability used to be around $21 million. You changed the calculation method, and now it is at $46 million, and it is also required to be carried on our balance sheet moving forward. So that can, you know, have an impact. We have to have something set up to show that we are funding that liability, to show that we're addressing that liability, or it could have a negative impact if we go to the bond market. Lastly, the impact of the state budget, it's getting underway, and, and we never know what, what, what we're going to get until, until after that settles. So as we look ahead, it, it's very important just to, to understand that we will be incurring additional expenses in 2019. That is a fact. There are some that we know now and see on the horizon for 2020, and there are others that, that are there that are yet to be uncovered. So, you know, questions like, how will the CIP and space needs analysis look? How much will the improvements we decide to do cost? They're going to be very big numbers, but they're going to be numbers we'll be discussing and numbers that we're going to be discussing in 2020. So again, I go back to how I opened this presentation. Kudos to this board, kudos for your leadership, kudos to the position that we're in as we head toward this capital improvement planning, toward actually putting action to this capital improvement plan. We're in an excellent position, and, and Mitch will discuss that more when he gets up here. Lastly, Richard's here, and again, thank him for getting out today. He, he's had some surgery, but he's, said he feel, said he felt 27 years old again when I talked to him, when he came in. But nonetheless, glad to have him. He'll be up here talking about the revaluation. I pointed out the, the, the revaluation, the, this, our ad valorem tax on that graph that I showed at the beginning, and that consistent revenue. The revaluation is designed to accordingly adjust for growth or decline, and that, that impacts this, which is our most consistent revenue source. So as Richard comes up, that is a very important deal, and we need to let that play out as we go into 2020 so we can accurately budget for these new expenditures that we will be incurring. When I talk about our most consistent revenue source, let's compare it to sales tax. When you look at ad valorem tax revenue from, this is 2006 to 2018, in actual audited ad valorem tax revenue, the, the range here, you had an, the range of increase, the range of average annual increase is 8% from, from 2006 to 2018, and that's increase or decrease. You've got an 8% range in what this did from 2006 to 2018. When you look at sales tax, you had a 31.8% range in what sales tax did from 2006 to 2018 over that 12-year time period. So I say that to say, that's what consistency is in the ad valorem tax revenue. And when you're going to be taking on consistent operating expenses that you know are consistent, that you know we're going to, you're going to carry with you year forward, you know, we need to be sure that the revaluation is accurate and gets us where we need to be with consistent revenue as we move into 2020. So again, thank you for your time, and that is just a, a brief overview of, you know, where we've been in 2018, how that affects what we're looking at in 2019, which together ultimately impact the situation in 2020.
Thank you Derek. Thank you. Great job. Could we get that electronic format?
Yeah.
Lot of information.
Sure.
Take me to page to go through it and understand it, please.
All right Mitch, amended capital improvement plan, welcome back.
All right, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. Let's pull it up here. So. How do you need you?
Yes sir.
Water.
Water.
I might need the Bible too.
Kind of word when you went up there.
Again, thanks for having me back. Glad to be here, year two of the CIP and the CIP process. Last year was really the kickoff. I think, you know, we got to know each other well and had some, several meetings along the way. I won't necessarily rehash everything we talked about last year, but maybe just a quick refresher, and I'll go at a high level, but if there's anything you want to dive into in detail today or as a follow-up, I'm happy to do that. Year one is really, was really kind of a testing the waters, getting our, getting our feet under us with the CIP process, continuing to refine it this year, and then I think next year is the real critical year for the action items and, and putting a plan in place that we can track for, for a several year period of time. The big piece of that is the space needs study. You approved that as part of last year's CIP, you funded it as part of the budget this year. That is in process and will be wrapped up, as I understand it, later this summer, which is perfect timing for you all to digest it, get a sense of what the results of that space needs study are, and then heading into the fall and winter of next year, really incorporate that into the CIP. So this is kind of our interim year between the initial adoption, updating it this year, and then next year with the space needs study in hand, really developing a firm action plan like Derek mentioned. So, high level, again, I'm going to go through this quickly, Derek hit a lot of it on, on his state of the county, but start out with a reminder on credit. The county is not currently rated by any of the national rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's or Fitch, but you have been rated in the past. And in the past, you were rated AA2 by Moody's and AA- by Standard and Poor's. And you can see on the chart on the right-hand side of the page, that's, that's in what we call the AA category, which is the second highest category you can be in. AAA is the highest. There are nine counties in North Carolina rated AAA, I should have looked at the page, I've got it on there. Nine counties in North Carolina rated AAA, and then 48 counties rated in the AA category. Again, you all are not rated, you were in the AA category, and we would expect that if you ever do need a credit rating, you would be in that AA category. This is important not just if we ever need to get a credit rating to sell bonds in the public markets, but it's also important because banks do their own credit analysis, and they will assign you an internal credit rating. So as part of the CIP, when we're making planning decisions, we want to keep in mind how those decisions can impact our credit rating or our general credit status with the banks. Ultimately, that's going to drive, number one, our access to capital to fund the CIP, our access to borrow money, and number two, the interest rate at which we can borrow that money at. Credit is the biggest impact on the interest rate that you're going to receive that you can control. Obviously, the market generally will have an impact on the credit, on the interest rates that you have, but your credit will drive that as well. So we're going to keep this in mind as we go through, and for perspective, we're going to compare you all to North Carolina and nationally rated counties, AAA, AA and single A, to make sure that where we are and where we're going, we're going to be in general range with those other rated counties. Just high level on the things that credit, credit rating agencies look at when determining credit, and ultimately what the banks look at as well. The rating agencies are very transparent, and I find this the easiest way to talk about credit and how lenders will look at you from a credit perspective. Moody's has four key categories, S and P has seven, but they all are basically the same thing. They, they would fit into Moody's four. And so I'll talk from Moody's, it's, the four categories are economy and tax base, this is the left-hand side of the, economy and tax base, finances, management and debt and pensions. And so I think what's interesting here is 30% of your credit, credit score, credit rating, credit status with the banks is economy and tax base. And you can see our check marks there for short-term and long-term control. You don't really have short-term control over your economy and tax base. There's nothing you all can do as part of the FY20 budget that is going to immediately raise the median household income for citizens in Macon County. There's nothing you can immediately do in the FY2020 budget that's going to increase your assessed valuation by $100 million. There's plans that you can put in place, long-term economic development plans to help raise that tax base, raise the median household income over time, but it's not an immediate change. So that's where we look at the other items, the other 70% of the credit, finances, you have control over that as part of your budget, and you have a clear track record of doing a great job in managing yourselves financially. That's a real strength for you all, and you, you've proven that in the past, and you can control that heading into the 2020 budget. Management, you've done a great job in managing yourselves. That is not just from a budgetary basis, although that's, that's a consideration, but it's also policies and procedures and planning. And the CIP process that you implemented last year in and of itself is a positive in that management category. There's other things that you consider, can consider as we move forward in the CIP process. We talked about policies last year, codifying the things that you're doing already in a financial policy document. That would be another step that you could take, have short-term control of in, in affecting the management score. And then finally, debt and pensions, just controlling the amount of debt that you issue. You're in great shape right now, and we'll continue to track that as part of the CIP process to be sure we don't get out of line with other rated entities. Okay? So Derek talked through this, and I, so I'm not going to go through it in detail, but we did just want to take a look back at your general fund operations and fund balance. And I think the bottom line here is, I'll reiterate what Derek said, y'all have done a great job of managing yourselves. You can see through line 35, you've been able to consistently add to fund balance over the years, over the last four years, which sets you up nicely, I'm on line 35 down here if you're looking at your sheet, which sets you up nicely as you consider funding additional operational needs, funding additional capital needs. You've added to fund balance, you have a structurally balanced budget, and 18, you had a structurally balanced budget, meaning your operating revenues covered your operating expenses, you were able to do some capital, and you're still able to add to your fund balance. So you've done a great job of managing yourselves. This, this will be looked at very favorably from the credit markets. And then going into the fund balance, Derek talked in a lot of detail about this, so I won't go into detail, but you're in very good shape here on fund balance, nicely above the informal policy that you all maintain of roughly 25%. That may be, that may be something that you want to consider adopting a financial policy for, putting, you know, you're, you're acting on it, you're maintaining, you're maintaining that informal 25%, that's something that you could formalize and just have in a policy document. What I'd say about this fund balance is you are above your 25% policy. That provides you with some flexibility. Derek talked about using some of that in 2019 for some of the initiatives that you've looked at doing. Those one-time uses, things like capital or one-time transfers to the health fund that you all did, those are the type of items that are, that you generally want to use fund balance for. When you think about using fund balance for anything other than a one-time capital or one-time infusion into, into other funds, you can quickly find yourselves getting in trouble over time. If you chose to fund a COLA, or if you chose to fund new positions out of fund balance, that works for the first year, but the second year, you've got to come up with those dollars. So if you go back to fund balance the second year, maybe you're okay, but if you continuously go back, that fund balance runs out, and you've got to address it eventually as part of your budget. So from a credit markets perspective, they like to see, they understand that you use fund balance from time to time, and they like to see that tied to one-time items. The other thing that this fund balance does, it provides you some flexibility in terms of funding one-time projects or one-time initiatives, but it also provides flexibility within the CIP. We're going to see that, we're going to see your initial department requests this afternoon, and those are going to be refined and revised over time. But what you'll see is there are some larger needs out there, and some larger renovations, new buildings, that are likely to be funded with debt or some component of debt. And in North Carolina, the local government commission asks that you have project bids in hand before they will approve a debt issuance. So what that means for you all is in order to get to the point where you can debt fund a project, where you can borrow money to fund the construction of a project, you have to have the project designed and bid ahead of time. So you can't fund your preliminary design and engineering work with bond proceeds initially. You have to have the funds on hand to be able to cash flow that for what could be a year or two or three years during that preliminary engineering phase. So this fund balance provides you with a lot of flexibility to cash flow those preliminary expenses. We can reimburse those expenses once we borrow for, to fund the project, we can put the money back in fund balance, but there may be a period of time where we need to use that to do the preliminary work on the projects. So again, this is providing you a lot of flexibility to accomplish that. Okay? Page eight just shows you how you stack up to your peers or the other Page eight just shows you how you stack up to your peers, or the other rated counties nationally in North Carolina. You're in very good shape, is the bottom line. From a dollar perspective, which is the top, the top of these ratios are dollars, the bottom are as a percent of budget. From a pure dollar basis, you're in line with the AA medians. And then from a percentage basis, you're above all of those medians. So on a relative basis compared to your budget size, you have very healthy fund balance. And again, that's providing you with the flexibility. Okay? Tax-supported debt, Ms. Hall went through this earlier, 28.3 million of total debt outstanding. That's going to pay down by fiscal year 2034. So you'll have all of that paid over the next 15 years. The longest piece of that debt is the borrowing you all did last year. And as Ms. Hall said, this decline in your debt service, the decline in annual payments and debt service after fiscal year 20 is going to provide you with some flexibility or some affordability in the future related to the CIP. Okay? Pages 11, 12 and 13 are the key debt ratios that we look at. And we talked about these a lot last year. The 10-year payout ratio, what percentage of your principal are you repaying over the first 10 years? Debt to assessed value, how much principal amount of debt do you have outstanding compared to your assessed value or your tax base? And debt service to expenditures on 13, what percentage of your annual budget do debt service payments represent? I think I used this analogy last year. Debt service payments are fixed payments. You can't furlough a debt service payment, you can't turn the lights off early on a debt service payment. It is what it is, you have to pay it. And so that's a piece of your budget that is not flexible. That's one of those items, as Derek mentioned earlier, that you have to continue funding. Whether the revenues come in or not, that's a fixed component that you have to pay for. So all of these are the key debt ratios that we look at. And I went through them quickly because the bottom line is you all are in great shape on these ratios. You've managed your debt profile very well, and going forward, these are something that as you look to fund a CIP, if it does have a debt component, we can put some policies in place associated with these ratios to give lenders, citizens, yourselves comfort that we're taking, when we take on debt, we're going to do it in a responsible fashion. Okay? So looking at these ratios, you have debt capacity. It is reasonable for you to be considering using debt as a tool to help fund your CIP.
Page 13.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about to consider a policy established for maximum level of debt service to expenditure?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a formula for that?
There's no set formula. We have some sample policies that we use, and the actual percentage ranges, I'd say the most common is around 15%. But one of the things that we'd want to do when considering these policies is, we'll ... I don't want to get ahead of Lori and Derek, but probably what I would recommend is let's wait until we get the space needs study and really start developing that action plan for a longer-term funding of the CIP. We've got some flexibility in the percentage on that, on all of these ratios. And I think what we want to do is establish a policy level that allows us to accomplish the things that we need to do within that space needs study and our other CIP items, and doesn't necessarily, doesn't limit you unnecessarily. And so, for example, by looking at this, you'd say, oh, we're in great shape, we've got 7% debt service to expenditures, let's do 10, let's set a limit of 10%. Well, you could, you're certainly under that now, and you would be just fine, but as we look to fund what could potentially come out of a space needs study, we might find ourselves at 15 or 16%, which is still a very good level and a very reasonable level. So we wouldn't want to necessarily set a limit of 10% now because that makes sense, and then find ourselves a year from now in the potential to breach that policy immediately. So I think when determining that level, we're going to look at what the peer comparatives look at, we'll look at other counties, what do they look at, and then we'll look at your needs in the future and put all those things together, talk to you all, and come up with a reasonable level if you choose to do those policies. Does that answer your question, Shabil?
Yeah, we just have to be careful, because you go back through the recession time, you know, you go through another recession, and you have a policy here, you're limiting yourself to 15%, you probably need to change that policy.
Well, and that's a great point, and we're seeing that right now with a lot of counties, particularly on that 85 corridor and around the Raleigh and Charlotte area, where they didn't do a lot of school projects during the recession. It was just a tough time, but the kids kept coming. And so now they've found themselves with a lot of school needs, for example, there's other needs as well, but I'm using schools as an example, a lot of school needs. And we're finding a lot of them are exceeding their debt service to expenditure policy as part of the planning process. And that's okay, because what we have in the policy document, what we try, what we recommend you put in your policy document, is that you all as a board have the ability to make an exception to your policy if you deem it appropriate and the project necessary, and you have a plan in place to come back in compliance with your policy. And we have had that conversation, I'm going to speak from the credit rating perspective, we have had that conversation more times than I can count over the last two years with the rating agencies, and it has never been a negative. And actually, I think it's a positive because it demonstrates a process. That's what they care about. They want to know that you have a planning process in place, and that you all as a board are thinking about these things, and you're aware. And you say, we're aware, we know that we're going to go to 16% on our debt service to expenditures for three years, but we're okay with that. And we know, we've got a plan in place to get back into compliance, these projects are important, we've got a plan to manage them, and we're comfortable with this. And the most common answer we get is, that's great, that's good to hear, thank you. And that's, it ends up being a positive.
So we have two recessions, the needs continue.
That's right.
And you've got to find, you know...
And for this debt service to expenditure in particular, you think about it, the denominator is your budget. Well, when you went through your recession, what did you do with your budget? You cut it or you held it flat? But the debt service is either staying the same or going up, so when your denominator doesn't change, it impacts this ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. No, that's a great point. Okay, so you have, what I was saying is, you have capacity under these ratios, like we talked about last year. The bigger question, I think, is, is it affordable? You know, I can go out and get $150,000 mortgage to buy a house, but can I afford to pay that mortgage every month? That's kind of where we get to on the affordability. This is really small on the screen, I did print it for you on 11 by 17 paper, when you want to go back and study it. I'm not going to, I know I walked you through this probably five times last year, so I won't pain you with that this year. But the bottom line is, you all have done a really good job of identifying revenue sources to put towards debt service and capital projects. You've built that into your budget process, and these sources that you've identified are readily available, and you're planning for them. That's a great and an admirable position to be in. Long story short, I'll just orient you to this. Columns B through H are what we call your debt service requirements, but they do include annual pay-as-you-go capital. Columns I through T are the revenue sources identified to help pay for the debt service and capital. And then what I think you care about here is column X in particular, the adjusted surplus deficit, that is your future debt affordability. Those are the dollars that we're going to use in the future for pay-as-you-go capital and to fund debt service on debt-funded projects. And we're going to, in a moment here, we're going to quantify, what does that capacity mean for you over the next five years? Again, I will be available to answer any questions you have on this, but in the interest of y'all's time today, I won't go back through it. So, understanding you have debt capacity and you have some debt affordability from those revenues that you all have been dedicating, setting aside, we went through the process of updating the debt capacity and the debt affordability overview. And we looked at four cases. The first thing we do is we set your pay-as-you-go budget, and then whatever's left over, we calculate how much debt would that leverage? How much debt funding could you do based upon the leftover amounts? And in the first case, we funded $900,000 of annual county Pago, $600,000 of vehicle Pago, I know that's one of the items that you'll be addressing as part of the 2020 budget, and $600,000 of school capital and technology Pago. This dates back to the CIP last year. These are the same levels that we had in the CIP last year. Subsequently, you all made some amendments to your budget and gave some more dollars to the schools in particular, and funded the space needs study at the county level. So what we've then gone on and said incrementally, case two, if you wanted to add back the $250,000 of additional dollars for school security that you did last year, that would take your school Pago up to $850,000 a year. Case three, if you wanted to add back that additional $300,000 of school technology that Derek mentioned, that would take your school Pago up to $1.15 million. And then case four, if you wanted to go back to the level for the county where you funded the space needs study, that would take you back up to about $1.185 million of county pay-as-you-go capital. So that's the variable that we're going to be looking at in these capacity cases, is how much pay-as-you-go capital do we fund, and what does that leave us with in terms of debt capacity? And we've got that summarized for you here on page 17. And I think, you know, we've got our assumptions laid out, we're using 15-year level principal debt at 4.5% when we're doing debt funding. I think that's a very, that's a very conservative structure. LGC likes to see your level principal. That means, very simple example, level principal is if you're borrowing $20 million and you're paying it back over 20 years, you pay back a million dollars of principal every year, and interest is on top of that. That is the structure that the LGC likes to see. So that is what we're doing. But what that means is, your very first year is going to be your highest year of debt service, because the interest will be the highest, and then it'll step down every year after that. And we're doing 15 years, which I think is a conservative term, particularly for some of the projects that are on your CIP. 15 years is, I think you have a good number of banks who are interested in lending 15 years, and it's certainly available in the public markets. When you go out 20 years, there's a handful of banks that will do 20-year loans. We took some bids Tuesday for a city down east, and we received two bids on a 20-year financing and six bids on a 15-year financing. On the 20-year financing, it was in the 340 to 345 range. 15-year financing, the low was a 3%, but the rest were in the 3.25% to 3.5% range. So not a lot of difference right now in interest rates between 15- and 20-year financings. But anyway, so we're going with 15 years, a little more conservative, more banks would be interested in that term level, but you'll see in a moment, I've given you some perspective on 20 years as well. So what you care about, bringing it all together, lines 13 to 18, is this capital funding capacity. Okay? And what you see is, under case one, you can fund total capital, line 19, at $25 million. That's $10 million of Pago capital and about $14.5 million of debt funding capacity. And you can see the years in which you could spend those dollars. When solving for the debt capacity, we've solved for, we assume you issue the debt as early as you can. That's going to be the most conservative approach. If you delay a debt financing, or let's say you didn't have 10 million in needs in 2020, you waited until 2022 to do the borrowing, then that borrowing capacity would go up a little bit. But this is a good perspective, high-level planning tool here. About $25 million of funding capacity in case one. And then as we increase the pay-as-you-go capital amounts, your debt, your total funding capacity declines a little bit because your debt capacity declines. So you've got $25 million in case one, $23.8 million in case two, $22.2 million in case three, and actually $23.3 million in case four. That's actually gone up, even though the higher Pago amount, but if you look at when the debt is issued, it's issued a lot later. You can't, if you fund the highest level of Pago, you really have to wait until out until 2024 until you have any significant debt capacity. We've also given you some perspective on how that changes. Footnote one, if you were to do 20-year financing, we've given you some perspective on how the debt capacity could increase. Footnote three, we've given you some perspective, if you were able to make available the equivalent of one penny in revenue. So whether that's a new penny, a penny within your existing budget, or the equivalent thereof, we've given you some capacity about, or some perspective on how the capacity could increase. And then footnote two, we've also noted the general fund balance. So we talked about this earlier. You have general fund, unassigned general fund balance in excess of your policy. It's about $11 million in excess of your policy right now. So you could choose to use some of those dollars to put towards projects like you're planning to do for the Burn Center. But you certainly wouldn't want to use all of those dollars, because number one, you've got to be able to cash flow the design and engineering, you need some money to do that. And then you're going to have other needs at the county level that you need to use that fund balance for as well. So not suggesting that all $11 million would be available for projects, but that is another source that you could tap into for some of the smaller projects. Okay? All right. So moving forward, looking at the initial department requests, the kind of the general process here is Lori sends out requests to all the department heads, the schools, the community college, and asks for their capital requests over the next five to 10 years. Those requests come in on a standard form. Those forms are available for you to look at back in Appendix D, it has more details on each of the individual projects. And then we work with staff to summarize those and create these summary tables. Page 19 is the highest level summary, it's at the departmental level. But behind Appendix C, we've got the, by department with the specific projects behind it. So that's another resource for you as you're looking at these initial requests.
Mitch, if I could interject, I'd just like to remind the board that you are seeing numbers here populated in 2020 in column B, but once we complete that space needs analysis, you know, these are just placeholders right now.
That's right.
They're not, these are no particular prioritization, or they, until we get the prioritization done and the space needs analysis will be, these are just placeholders.
Right. So where we are in the process is, these are how the requests came in from departments, and we plug them in exactly like this. The next step in the process is going to be to look at this compared to our funding capacity and affordability, and staff will work and get you all's perspective to prioritize these projects. Likelihood is, these projects shift out into time, will not all be in 2020 or 2021. The likelihood is, they shift out into the future to better line up with your capacity. But just a couple of things to note, some of the big projects here showing in 2020, for the community college, it's the fire training center, the Burn Center, which is going to be funded with a grant and with, I think, I heard Derek say, general fund balance. And then the other piece of that is a public safety training center classroom space. That's the largest piece at about $7, $8 million. The school line, line six, that has some, the largest percentage of dollar amounts within the CIP. 2020 includes a Macon middle renovation. 2021 is a new, a request for a new Franklin High School. 23 and 24 are elementary school classroom additions. And again, you can see those details in the back. But when we push all this together, the first five years is about $100 million of capital needs, and then over the next 15 years through 2029, or excuse me, over the next 10, full 10 years through 2029, it's about $116 million of identified capital needs. Remember, this doesn't include anything that may come out of the space needs study. So anything that comes out of that space needs study may be on here or may be in addition to these projects. So certainly, you know, at least from the departmental requests, some significant projects to be considered by you all over the next 10 years. And likelihood is, that timeframe may stretch out longer than a 10-year period of time, but some significant potential capital needs that are out there. The other component that... The other component that is requested, associated with these capital projects is the operating costs, and that's on page twenty. We want to keep in mind, we as part of the CIP are focused on the capital needs and the capital funding component. So building that building. But we don't want to lose sight that if you add a new building, you add a new facility to the community college, there may be ongoing operating costs that are associated with that. That's got to be borne out of your general budget. Remember, we've identified a specific budget to fund CIP. But there's another component, the operating component, that's got to be managed through your ongoing operating general fund. And then lastly, just for perspective on twenty-one, I know this is a lot of numbers, it'll be easier for you to see in your book. But we've basically just gone through and looked at on an annual basis, again, as requested by department heads, on an annual basis, what are the capital requests? And how does that line up to our annual funding capacity in each of these cases? Tracking that annually and on a cumulative basis. And essentially, what you see is over this five year period, we've got about a hundred million dollars of capital needs, and we've got about twenty-five million of capacity based upon the current revenues. So there's a mismatch. And one of the things that we'll be doing, staff will be doing, working with you all, is to prioritize these department requests and try and make them fit a little bit better. But I think it's reasonable to say that there is a gap between the potential needs and the sources that you all have already set aside to fund the CIP. So decisions will need to be made, and that could involve pushing out projects or not doing projects, or it could involve trying to identify additional revenue sources, additional revenue sources to help fund projects if you choose to do that as well. And so this was our initial step, initial reintroduction into the CIP. Next steps in the process will really be presenting this to you all today. And then obviously, I think Derek and Lori and Lindsay and staff will be looking for your feedback and prioritization and any thoughts you may have on the department requested projects or the funding capacity. And I know they will be and will be working with them to refine a CIP plan, to come back to you all and present for consideration of adoption. We'll make any changes to that as you deem necessary, but ultimately, we'll want to get it finalized and adopted as part of the budget process. And like I mentioned earlier, then forward looking, starting next probably fall/winter timeframe, we'll really be incorporating the results of that space needs study. And we'll be coming back to you with a revised CIP next year. As we talked about, it's an annual process. I hope you all don't get tired of me. But it's an annual process. You revisit your needs every year. Oftentimes, priorities change from year to year, and things get shifted out or even taken off the CIP. New things pop up and get added. But the important thing is to have a plan in place to be able to address those needs. And you all are on your way to, not on your way, you all have done that. And now the challenge is, can we do all the projects that we want and need to do? Or do we need to look at different timing, different prioritization, and/or finding, trying to come up with additional or new revenue sources to address some of this? I went as fast as I could. Happy to answer any questions now and certainly be available for any follow-ups that y'all may have.
Thank you, Mitch. Any questions?
All I've got to say is it's such a novel idea to have a healthy fund balance.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right, 2019 revaluation updates. Welcome, Richard.
I don't have a slideshow today because we went over that four to six weeks ago.
How are you feeling? That's amazing.
It's experience, put it that way. Emergency back surgery. But one thing I have to reiterate that all you guys have talked over the years about our departments, well, I was in association with our EMS twice during this time. I don't know if we have any more professional people than anywhere else, but we've got the best. I think it's EMS, I think it's in every department. So when I hear Derek and the commissioners talking about our staff through experience, if you have dealt with the public and the public comes in, I think they get the best service here as about anywhere they could go. In saying that, we are now at revaluation. The notices have been out for a couple of weeks. And you know, we can talk about what the tax rate's going to be, what it's not going to be. There's a simplified version, which I showed you last time. And then there's a more detailed version that the finance groups come up with, and we'll be working with Derek and Lori on that in the near future. Our values basically stayed flat. We didn't lose twenty-five or thirty percent as we did prior. Some of the needs that we see is the difference in the growth patterns, and that's why you have revaluations to adjust things out. It may be really hot down four forty-one for four or five years, you've got a lot of projects going on, a lot of building going on or something, and then it just stabilizes and don't change. Well, downtown Highlands is the hotspot right now. There, any one, and you can, and I have the paper downstairs from the Islander, just a few weeks ago, they talked about if you was close into town and walkable to town, the big demand, big prices. So that's changed over the years. The clubs actually are taking a little bit back to it because people, first off, paying a big fee every year, and some golf is less important to the, people are aging now. So they're taking it back where the younger and more affluent people want to be around town, want to be around activity. So that's why Highlands is growing. The opposite end of that is Franklin. And you know, I've been at this thirty-four years, this is my sixth revale. And Franklin, I can say, has not grown in probably the last fifteen years or more. So that becomes a real problem when you're trying to leverage out where your growth is, and when you're talking about revenues and going up taxes and all that. And so if Franklin ever catches on, then you'll see the growth coming back of us adding maybe a hundred and fifty million a year, two hundred million a year in value. But what we're seeing is, all the shopping centers here are down in value because you have three empty ones and storage in there and bankruptcy, and you've got a lot of rentals. I've talked to some commercial real estate people here recently, since my back surgery, and some's been in the business in the Franklin area for thirty-plus years, and they said their rents are the same as they were in nineteen eighty or so. So that's the difference. The rents aren't the same in downtown Highlands as it was fifteen, twenty years ago. So that adds to value, value reflects on the overall stability of the county. Next thing is, and it was in the report Derek gave, if you notice that the inspections, the revenue was down. So we didn't have as many inspections, didn't have many new buildings, didn't have many new houses, but then the registered deeds was up. The values are going back up, but they're still not strong. Last year alone, Buncombe County values increased ten percent overall. Haywood's has gone up quite a bit. So all these things are tied together when we do a revale. We have to be equitable to the people around you, we have to be equitable in top of classes and that. So we come out basically even. What does that mean? It means when you go in and figuring your budgets this coming year, you're starting at that tax rate, and it's not going to go down. You don't have no room to go down. It's not going to go up like it did, you know, four years ago where you had to add six or eight cents to the tax rate. It may be like two cents, and then after you add that two cents, then whatever your new budget needs is going to have to be on top of that. Collections. If you notice in Derek's report that our collections are up. We've had the highest collection rates for the last two years, and just in your January report, we are ninety-four point two five through January compared to ninety-three point nine. So we're a half a point above last year's collections. And that's through things that we went through, you know, we've got attorney that helps us on that, and people are paying more readily. That reflects back to the economy also. So that's the positives. Also, right now is the time for appeals. We have one point two percent appeals at this time, which is substantially lower than we've had in a number of years. So what that tells me is that the values that we put on it are pretty accurate. We've talked to some commercial people already, Lowe's and some of these other companies, and they are satisfied, you know, with the values. So I think the revale is going to be one of the best ones we've had. Like I said, this is my sixth one. Most of my staff have been around for at least four of them. So I don't think you'll see the headaches from that, but what you will see, you're not going to have a big growth, you're not going to have this excess money coming in that, you know, it's not there. You're starting about the same place you were last year, and then you're going to have to go forward.
All right, thank you, Richard. Any questions?
Good to see you, Rich.
One thing I do want to point out is Abby Braswell is with me, she's been my assistant, and she's one of the, while I'm out, people's been fielding her calls and all that, and she does a lot of the real estate stuff. So she's the person that's fallen in. So more than likely, she is the one that will be taking my place in the near future as we move on to different things. And that's the next thing we have. We have three key personnel retiring in the next year from the tax department, myself, the collector, and land record manager. So, but I will have to say, through what we put in place years ago, and Carl was one of them when I came, we want, the question was, how can we make it better? And I said, hire local people, keep them, train them, and go forward. And during this whole time, this has been a test for my department that I hadn't been there to answer questions. So we know we have people in place. So I think the county, we have really good employees in every department, and I can't say enough about mine or any others because they do an excellent job for the county.
Thank you, Richard.
Judge Sheriff, before we start, I'm going to have to have a five minute recess. Sorry. Sorry.
Courthouse security at day. Sheriff Holland, welcome.
Good afternoon, and I'm glad to say it's good afternoon instead of good evening. It's nice we're having a meeting in the middle of the day instead of late tonight. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Of course, we're here to talk a little bit about courthouse security. And, and I will tell you, we're not going to go into great detail today. That'll be at a later date. But I just wanted to, to make you aware that we have come up with some ideas. If you remember back about almost two years ago now, a couple of you met with, with the judge and I and with some real concerns about courthouse and about security within the courthouse. It was brought to y'all's attention. We had a, a public hearing or meeting about it. It was brought up some more. And then you all appointed me as the responsibility of putting together a committee and of county employees and people within this courthouse to be on that committee. And if you know anything about committees, which you all do, twenty-seven people is a lot of people to have on a committee. And that's what we've had. We've had a very large committee. It was everybody within this courthouse. Every agency within the courthouse was represented. And we appreciate, appreciate the fact that Judge Coward, Superior Court Judge Coward, brought this to y'all's attention. And, and we're, we feel like we're getting somewhere. Since that time, we've had, the North Carolina Sheriff's Association came, and they did a, a review of courthouse security, as well as the U.S. Marshal Service came, and they did a review. And then subsequently following both of their reviews is when we started doing our reviews. And so we, we have come to an end of, of that review. And we have some recommendations that the, the judge is requesting and the committee is requesting. And one of those, one of those suggestions that I will tell you right off the bat would be, originally it was to have one entry into the courthouse. And we understand that for you to do the one entry into the courthouse would create a lot of things that will come out in this plan that, that they're doing now. The needs assessment, space needs assessment and all that. And so we understand that right now, we don't have the funds to be able to do all the, the perimeter changes that would need to be done. And so we've come up with the idea of having two entryways. And, and having the two entryways, you would only be eliminating one. And there's five entries into the courthouse. And with these two entryways that we would do, you're only going to eliminate one entryway. And that would be over here to the right, as I'm standing, down by the clerk of courts office. They would still have access into the front of the courthouse, both doors. The x-ray machines and metal detectors would not be until you go past the window of the clerk of courts. So people could even come to the courthouse and go to the window and conduct business. And then, of course, here at the back entry would be the second location. And they would be able to get to the sheriff's office. We'll have a window there where they can come to the sheriff's office. But just before the elevator is where we'll have the, the cutoff point where they then come through the checkout, come through the metal detectors and x-ray machines.
We've got one to main entrance, one to gazebo side. Two of those open, and then this one is the third, right?
Correct. So the only one that we would be losing access is the one there at the clerk of courts to my right. That's the only one, instead of losing all but that one. And, and so we've already looked at the equipment. The equipment that will cost us to do both of those is approximately fifty-eight thousand, maybe a little bit more change than that. I mean, we've actually got the quotes, it's fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, something like that. And that's for both x-ray machines and both metal detectors. And they're movable. So if IT comes in and they have a pallet of computers or, or maintenance has something they need to bring in on a pallet, the metal detector we can move and they can still get through. As you all, courthouse security, I don't think people understand how many people come into our courthouse. And we figured out between me and the clerk of courts office last week, twenty thousand people came into this courthouse utilizing our court system. That doesn't include the register of deeds. That doesn't include coming to mapping. It doesn't include all the other departments that are coming. These are twenty thousand people related to the judicial system, the justice system. That's a lot of people. And the other night, I sat at home, you know, trying to work on this big fancy presentation that I could show you and bore everybody to death. And I started looking at YouTube videos of the different incidences that have happened in commissioner board meetings, school board meetings, courthouses outside the courthouse. And it absolutely scares me to death even more once you do that because it's, it happens so often. And a lot of people, when they built that first courthouse, I mean, that new courtroom over here that, that was not built correctly, that's not being utilized, it's now management's office, the day that was in the paper and announced that that was being put into place and completed is the day that you had that inmate at the Atlanta courthouse that killed those people and those guards and then took that lady hostage. It happened the exact same day. So it happens more times than not. And it's so easy to do. And, and with a little bit of hesitation, I'll give you an example. Today, you know, even though I've got a great group of guys and, and good security officers, they're busy doing other things. And so today, you know, we've had, we've had situations that could have happened in here even. And, you know, if I turned around and asked anybody if anybody's carrying concealed, if they have a concealed license, they, they might be carrying concealed. And of course, they're not going to say, yes, I've got my gun with me. But the reality of it is, they could because we don't really know. There, there, nobody is checked when they come in. And I give, in fact, I do know that somebody in here has a gun that's not a law enforcement officer. I know for a fact, we've already talked about it. I'm not going to tell you who that person is because that person can legally have a gun in here. But I'll give you an example. Ronnie Beal, you're the lone Democrat in here. They'd love to get rid of you. What's in front of your desk, anything out of the ordinary?
I can't answer that.
Well, there's a box in front of you. Pick that box up.
This box right here.
What's it say underneath, underneath it?
It's loaded.
No, turn it over.
There's a bomb in there.
Right.
Here you go.
Are you carrying concealed?
Not today.
Do you have a weapon on you? Are you sure? Now, in all fairness, something really good happened. He has a gun right behind him. And, and all fairness, that gun actually fell and was under your feet for a long time. And, you know, we train people and we teach people in the community, see something, say something. And I will say, because of our good school staff, one of our school staff members immediately went to my courthouse security officer and said, there's a gun under that report. Now, several of you have walked into here and come around here and stood right here. And the whole time you were standing here, this was sitting right there.
Oh.
And nobody noticed it.
Derek, you walked all over it.
I stepped on it.
Now, in all fairness, that is not loaded and is not.
It's not a gun.
It goes properly in the county.
But, yeah, that's, that's my, that's one of my duty weapons. So I say that, we're, we're kidding around here right now, but the reality of it is, it could easily happen. We've had incidences already. There's courthouses, sheriff's offices have courthouse security. The next county over has stopped guns coming into their courthouse. People have accidentally had guns, probably no bad intentions intended, but they had a gun in their briefcase and they forgot that it was still there. And, and that does happen. But it's one way to keep it from happening. And the one thing we don't want is, I'll give you an example, our attorneys. You know, there's attorneys that have concealed carry permits, just like some of you may have some. Some of you I know have, have concealed carry permit. But if an attorney comes in here and he's got a gun in his suitcase or his briefcase, and he's meeting with my inmates, and he steps out to take that call from the secretary and accidentally sits there and leaves that briefcase sitting there, then that inmate has full access to that gun. So there's measures that we need to take and we want to take. And we don't have a full report that, that we have for, to, to give you today. We will eventually have that. The judge has prepared a draft to, to send you all, and we'll, we'll send you that. But the one thing that we're ready to move on is, is we're, we are going to be coming to you during this budget process and asking for, for additional personnel to be able to man these two entryways. That's, that's a necessity. We have to have those people. We can't do it for any, anything less than that. And that's, that's something that will be in our budget as well as the equipment. And there may be a few other things that we have, smaller items, I guess you would say, that we'll have to ask for. But we'll be preparing that. We'll also be coming to the county attorney to talk to him about if there's any kind of, uh, legal issues that we have to, to do to, to put this into effect. And he'll give us our legal advice. But we just want to let you all know that that's, we're moving forward. We've done exactly what you've asked us to do.
You know, Sheriff, we've looked at the equipment and the price keeps going, you know. It came down one time and it went back up.
Correct.
Are there any reason, I mean, we've got fifty-five thousand dollars appropriated in this budget, right? For, are there any reason that we don't go ahead and secure the equipment?
Using that money?
Using that money? I mean, before it goes there, it's going to go up again. We know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's more and more courthouses have to adhere to what we're doing. Supply and demand, I mean, it's going to go up.
Absolutely.
So you're talking, you know, five thousand more dollars to go ahead and get our equipment if that's what you decided on and that's what worked. Why not go ahead and get it ordered?
Yeah, and the thing about it is, with the space needs analysis, you may have come up with a different configuration about what courthouse should be, whether we should maintain this building or do something else. But this will be a county building, as long as we can think of it, right? I mean, there's no plan to, to model it. It'll be a county building, whatever it's used for, court system, register of deeds, or whatever. It needs to be a secure building. So this is a way to secure the building for as long as we can imagine. Now, there are other things that could be done in the report that we've done to put the icing on the cake, camera systems and things like that. But just to, just to create a secure building, that's what needs to be done.
And there are some things to do in your chambers too, Judge. I know that, that you had requested in panic buttons and such as that.
And all those things come with the price. But if we, you know, if we look at the space needs analysis, we don't want to spend money where we didn't want, we didn't need to spend. But as I'm sitting here with a straight shot of that parking lot that's unguarded and an unlocked door and nobody guarding that door, my skin is crawling. I don't know how y'all feel sitting here. But there's, I, I deal with crazy people all the time in my job. There's a lot of them, and there's a lot of them here in Macon County. And they're angry, and they're addicted to methamphetamines, and they're looking for something to show how they feel. They, they need, and this is, this is, if it doesn't happen in Macon County tomorrow, well, it could be a year from now, or it could be six months from now. And so what he's talking about with the fifty-five thousand or fifty-eight thousand is something that needs to be done, that needs to be done now.
Of course, it's going to go up again. This is the best price you've found for the best fit that you look at.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually taken and gone to other counties. And one other thing that I want to make, because I think you may get some complaints on, some of the counties that went to securing their buildings, they didn't require the employees and all to go through their, through their system. And all of them, every single one of them that we visited have said, if we could go back and change anything, we'd go back and include the employees as well from the beginning because you're going to have a little bit of friction when that first happens. But I've already told my staff that what we want to do is make sure that we make our employees as a priority. When they're coming into work, make sure they're able to get in. If there's a line out there, which we're going to try not to have lines, but if there's a line, they just hold up their ID and they come straight up to the front. They go through the process as quick as they get there so they can get in and so they can provide the services that we, as he was saying earlier, provide so well to our community. And so you'll, you'll get some friction. The employees that, you know, we did a survey at the beginning, and overwhelming majority of the employees in this courthouse support that idea of doing that. I mean, anybody that knows anything about active shooter situations, a lot of times, it is an employee or a former employee. So from the get-go, we're going to require everybody to go through it. And I know, and I'm not going to go into details, but we have some agencies and, and people within this courthouse that are already starting to do where they park and all is going to change. And so they're already planning to change where they park now as to when it will be when this changes. So they're going ahead and getting used to it now and, and just checking it out, seeing how it works out. And going to make that change immediately.
Carl, in regards to the equipment, that technology, like all other technologies, is, is has, has changed and is continuing to change. And I think, Ronnie, more than, than the supply and demand, that the technology has changed, and that's where we've seen that effect in the price, I'd encourage you to look at leasing that equipment. Because from the information, which I, what I have is very limited, what limited information I have, that technology is rapidly evolving. It's been driven at the federal level, so I would just, I would hate for us to get a technology that is, that we wouldn't necessarily want settled on.
Go out of date in two years and be a good boat anchor.
Basically, when divided, we'd be out of date.
And, and we can look at that. We'll, we'll be happy. I'll tell you, we will look at that. I just know in, in past cases of us trying to lease anything, has been a major issue. So I didn't even think about leasing.
It may be a bad idea.
Yeah. Because we talked about leasing the body cameras and ink card cameras. That was a fiasco, so.
If it's structured properly, it can be done. The, the bottom line is you have to realize that leasing, that they, they understand the risk of outdated, uh, equipment as well, and they build that into their lease policy. You're not going to escape that, that risk entirely.
Do you have, I know we had it at one time, but where are we at with the, if you don't look at the lease thing, or the, when could you have that ready, Sheriff?
Uh, the lease, I mean, we'll.
I mean, if you could have the price and show us what, not that we know what we're looking at.
We've got the price, and we've already gotten the quotes, and because time keeps going by, we go back to them to get another quote, and it's actually worked out to our advantage, because it comes out, it came out a little cheaper.
Those are informal quotes. This is a large enough purchase that it'll have to be advertised as bids.
Right, right.
So we need to go ahead, what do we need to do to make that happen?
As far as the budgeted funds, if we're going to use the fifty-five thousand that's already budgeted, the commissioners are just going to have to all be on board with that and understand that we're no longer going to be adding these two additional positions for half a year, that we're going to be instead spending that on, uh, the.
Equipment.
The equipment, but we will carry it forward to be added to the total amount of positions needed for courthouse security in fiscal year twenty.
But we'll start the process now. What worries me, if we start the process now, we're into February, March, April, you're already into May, maybe when we get the equipment. I think it said, what'd they say, delivery was like eight weeks or something?
Six to eight weeks.
Yeah. So you're eight, so now we're into May, and it's really going to start heating up, you know, it's going to get more busy then, so, you know, whatever we need to do to keep it, get it rolling, let's do it.
Well, the one thing that, the one thing that we're going to have to remember too is, we cannot buy this equipment and put it into place and, and man it without hiring the positions that we're going to be hiring. And, and that won't happen until, we've got the two positions, but we need the, we need the other four, and we won't be able to do this until July, when those four positions are manned, because we're, or there's just no way. But transports and cor, we're already shorthanded on, on bailiffing and doing courthouse security now. We will not be able to put the machines in place without those positions.
But when you get, when you see how long the machines will come, they'll tell us, they'll tell this board, we'll, here's what you've got to do. We can always amend that.
Okay.
They'll do what we have to do. We won't have to do it. It's been two years, I know.
You've got to have six positions.
Three, three downstairs and three upstairs.
How are you going to handle your vacation times?
The same way we handle our vacation times with everybody else. They'll have to make sure that they get somebody to take their place in courthouse security. That's how we have to deal with every position.
Would you say the total again was for these, these two machines?
Uh, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-eight thousand something.
I stand corrected. That could be in form of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's less than ninety.
Dude, as I pull up my glasses on.
Whereas Carl said, we could lease them. I'm, I'm personally.
Leasing gets very.
I think this is a priority, and I'm, I'm tired of passionate. We've made a decision, let's go forward and get this done. It's the only item which we're going to be talking about later on in our meeting tonight, but it's the only item that I have on my, uh, priority goals for us moving forward. So that's just me, but I've, I've just time to get it done.
We've had the conversation, and we've all had the conversation. Now that we've had these for two years, and that's something should, hopefully never happen, Judge, but if it should, well, what are you boys doing? You talked about it for two years.
I'd go build a little myself.
I wouldn't.
So let's. So do we move forward with the, with the six positions and two pieces of equipment in this fiscal year?
Well, I'd recommend, Mr. Man, you get with the sheriff and, and see what exactly about the equipment, how long it takes to get here and bring it back.
I think we're all not in an authorization, you can move forward.
You're going to have.
It is, one's for one and one's for two.
Whatever equipment. So what he's asked for, six positions and equipment.
So you're going to have to just make it, bring it back to us on Tuesday night, and let's just move on?
Those six positions will start, if, if that's what we're talking about, that six positions will start whenever the delivery day is on.
You've already, you've already, you'll just be budgeting for four, because you've already approved the two. So what we're asking for, in addition to those two, that are about to change here soon, we've already done the personal action forms, is four, total of four.
That'd be what we're looking at, Robbie, is reoccurring in, in just one time. The equipment, we hope, is just one time, whether, like Carl says, we lease or buy or whatever we do. But the reoccurring expense, Derek, to bring that back to us, as six employees.
About four hundred.
So bring that back to us as six employees, and, and what, you need to decide what, what level those employees are going to come in at. Can't, you can't afford to be road deputy for that job, so.
Do what now?
I'm looking at that again.
Do what now?
I mean, you, whatever position you bring to, to work, though, to work here at the courthouse, courthouse security, you have to hire new positions.
Correct. And what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm taking experienced officers, and I'll give you an example. I got an SRO that's going to be coming out of the school, and I will replace him at the school at a beginning SRO pay. And then I'll have a, an officer coming off of patrol who's reached the age of seventy and has decided that he's ready to come off of working nights, and so he will transfer from patrol and come to courthouse security.
And so that'll be a higher salary, because you have a, a tenured officer that is his, what's his rank?
Sergeant.
So you've got a sergeant.
And I'll be replacing.
So that'll be a.
But he'll be replacing.
I'll be, I'll be replacing his vacant position. Somebody else will go into a sergeant's position, but I will hire a new deputy on that, on that shift.
To replace him.
To replace him at beginning pay.
So there'll be, but there'll be somebody moving up to a sergeant position that he vacated on the road, right?
One of my corporals will then be promoted to sergeant.
I don't even think we need to be involved with those types of details.
We only budgeted them though at a minimum pay grade.
We budgeted, like Ronnie said, for a beginning.
The basic beginning deputy levels.
And so with these, we just saw these, so we need to talk to the ship. We need to just talk to the sheriff, like the chairman said, about the details, because we do have some details to work out for.
Is Tuesday feasible?
Okay.
Has the architect weighed in on equipment specifications for the space needs analysis?
No, that's, that's the other thing. We, we were originally going to wait until the space needs analysis was completed, so are we going to forego that now?
I think you could pick up the phone and probably call them and get, and get their.
They were actually with me and the judge when we showed them what we were doing, and, you know, just in speaking with us, they thought it was great.
I'm, I'm going to step on that.
But let me ask you this, so you're gonna, you wanting to hire two now, but you don't have equipment in place? I don't know.
Just don't need to hire any of them to get the equipment.
Right, I mean, that's.
Right. We're still in two months at the best.
I don't see what we're doing that's going to cost an extravagant amount of money that's going to be wasted, because anything we buy is going to be able to be moved, if we do move down the road to a new location.
It says operating.
It's the operating.
People goes with it.
And even with the operating, we're, you're, you're still going to keep them. You're not going to change that.
Right, yeah.
That's all, that's what I'll say, there were, there might be some minimal infrastructure. It'll be a tremendous amount. Building inspections and fire inspector, uh, been brought in to weigh in on replacement of this equipment?
Well, that's all, that's all supposed, that's all details that the space needs analysis is going to, was going to take into consideration as well, if we had chosen to.
I think we're just going to jump ahead of that. We probably ought to try to get that information before these purchases are made.
That's why it could be.
Oh, yeah. I think that's a great point, and you start putting stuff in those exits.
And we don't, right, we don't know what we're going to have to do fire code, and that was why the, the, the process with the space needs analysis was going to look at that stuff and.
Carl, we'll see if Tim, we're ready to go.
We can do it.
Let's get that here, and we'll move on.
All the other federal buildings, um, state facilities, county facilities of any and have one entry.
Correct. And to do one entry here, which is what we wanted, but there's so much infrastructure that you would have to do. First of all, say you just had it up, up here, then everybody that parks down below or out on Main Street is going to have to come all the way up to the third floor to make entry. If you made everybody downstairs, then people are going to have to come from those back parking lot, rain, sleet, or snow, and come down this, this entryway, which can't make handicapped accessible because of the, the grade. And so that's, and, and because of the space needs analysis, I truly believe they're going to make a, a recommendation that's much different than, than, uh, what a lot of us think. And, uh, and so what I don't want to do is spend a whole lot of money on this building just for them to say, for example, we think it needs to be somewhere else totally, and then we wasted that.
I'm not arguing with you, so take aim, but I know in other counties.
I'm not an architect, so go for it.
In other counties, they have forgone that expense and simply posted on the door that this now is accidentally, you, you're going to walk around.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can do that.
And, and it's, it's.
We don't spend the money, make it convenient for the people, paying the taxes to use the building.
And here's, here's the other problem with this entryway. If you eliminate all the entryways in the whole building except for right here, then all your prisoners, all your prisoners being transported to the back of the here, and all your civilians, all your defendants, all your criminals, and all your jurors are all going to be coming through here and getting on the same elevator. It's, 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 it's going to be a major undertaking, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to see what.
I think it's just a temporary solution. I think we're going to have to have a better long-term solution.
Absolutely. We, we agree with that.
But in the meantime, I don't see anything that we're doing that's going to.
We're not wasting money.
We're not wasting money.
And I, and me and the judge both feel that this was the best way to actually save money, is by having the two, because there's a lot of changes in order to make one entryway.
I will follow Carl's lead. I think leasing will be a good option, so.
And so do we, so again, what is the deliverable that we're to have next Tuesday?
See the cost, the overall cost.
Okay.
And the, and the machines.
And then the wait time.
Do you want to lease, you going to talk to your space needs people and see what Robbie's got for equipment, and how long it's going to take to get here, and can we lease? Some things we can't lease, I remember that, well, over the years, we tried to lease.
You can lease it as long as it's structured to comply with.
And the lease costs, and the lease costs too much money. Because you have to buy the.
For instance, body cameras, the problem we have with body cameras, and we found we couldn't lease, leasing the body cameras ended up being the same cost as purchasing.
That's what they do.
Right.
And that's what the lease, and the lease agreements, we've looked at for a lot of things, especially the sheriff's department, the board at the jail, for instance. Uh, you know, that was a bad.
Yep.
So the le, lease is oftentimes just a mechanism for financing.
One question.
Yes, sir.
When you develop this plan, when does the plan quit being for public consumption? I, I, I think when you develop a plan, you've got security like this, everything should be talked out here, what you're doing. Because I'm a, a negative person, I'm going to be reading that, and I'm going to plan my maneuver up to what you're saying, so I'm not sure. There's, there's such thing as public consumption, fine, but I think there's a time when this needs to be, uh, talked about in a more of a.
And that's what, that's what we've been very mindful of, and our, our local media has done a fantastic job of not reporting some of the details that we've discussed, and, and we go out of our way to let them know how much we appreciate that, because we see it when they don't write it. And so, uh, there's a whole lot of stuff that we've not said to you in this meeting for that exact reason.
Because there's people out there that doesn't need to know.
Absolutely.
Did, and you, so next Tuesday, we want to be building inspections, fire code, make sure we ain't got no code issues, look at the, the pricing of that, and then get the, the total cost for the six.
Well, if the equipment people is going to answer all those questions for you.
We'll know at the end of the day, on the, on the lease, because Adam's the one that's, is on, serves as chairman on that subcommittee, and he's the one that got the lease information.
I'm watching Warren nod his head, I think he's ready to help.
Um, he's already, he already has somebody on our committee. His fire marshal serves on this committee too. It's twenty-seven people, every agency in the county, in the county courthouse.
If you're seeing any issues, Warren. Warren, you foreseeing any issues?
No, they've, they've been involved in the process.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners, for taking this seriously and working on it. We appreciate it a lot.
So we'll be moving forward quickly.
You want to bomb back? You want to bomb back?
Yeah.
Scum down the poor old Democrat here, you going to blow me up?
Why don't you move to that end of the table?
I've already got forty texts for people here.
I may be the only one in the room, not for me.
All right, uh, school system topics, Dr. Baldwin.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As I listen to Derek present, uh, this year's budget, you know, as I am every year, I respect the, uh, the process that y'all go through and, and manage the county's finances and the job that Derek does, and, uh, none more so than this year, considering all the responsibilities that you had, um, in addition to providing, um, more resources for the school system. Certainly appreciate that this year. We were able to begin construction on the South Macon addition, the six classrooms down there. You know, weather today is allowing them to have a, a good-sized crew working on that project today, got blocks going up. We're excited about that, we're anxious about that, worried about, uh, August first, it's coming quick. The, the funding that you provided last year allowed us to, to purchase four hundred new iPads to replace old iPads that, uh, were, uh, not nearly as, uh, instructionally efficient as the new ones are. Tim's got three hundred of those in classrooms, and another hundred and twenty, uh, preparing to go to classrooms. We've got new active boards, additional security. You provided matching funds for two SROs that, uh, were very much needed. We've added, uh, security fencing to secure perimeters of, uh, schools in our, in our district. We've provided access control, uh, to several locations with, through, uh, lobby doors, swap card entrances and that sort of thing. We've, uh, added alarm systems and additional cameras at several of our schools. And, um, just as importantly, we've been able to avoid a reduction in our overall services that we provide to our students through, uh, additional, uh, funds for our operational budget. So we're very grateful for that, and we're excited about the upcoming school year. Before we get started, I'd like to have Angie, just to provide you an update, uh, on our current operational budget, as well as where, um, our capital outlays have been spent up to this point.
Current expense, we do have an operational budget of about ten, little, ten point five million dollars at this point in time, uh, with seven months completed, we should be at around fifty-eight percent, we're at sixty percent, so we're right in line with where we should be at this point in time of the year. That's about all I have for current expense, unless you all have any questions for me as far as current expense goes. Capital outlays, like Dr. Baldwin said, we have, um, done extensive safety and security stuff, particularly at Franklin High School. We've done a front door entrance at Franklin High School. I think it's almost completed. Perimeter, perimeter fencing around Franklin High School, as well as an alarm system and alarm system and access control doors, access control doors at Macon Middle College, and some security cameras at East Franklin Elementary. And I think we're in progress at Macon Middle that right now, with additional security cameras. So, and then a front desk, a little bit of a reconstruction at the front desk entrance at East Franklin Elementary School to make it a little safer and secure to walk in the entrance.
Angie, is the two hundred and fifty thousand that we put in security, which we took as priority, is that gone?
Yes.
Is that money completely gone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anybody having questions? Any additional questions about capital outlays?
About Union Academy?
About Union Academy?
Yeah, they just had a wall and everything there.
I think the wall is done.
The enclosure down to the computer lab, it is, though. We've got additional work on the exit door. It's too easily accessed from the outside right now. We are working on that, though. We have a couple of ideas about how to address that. You have, I put on your, in front of your seat there a few minutes ago, the capital outlay request for the upcoming school year. Some of these are holdovers from last year's requests. I'll try to go through these just really quickly, and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have. We do have requests for classroom door locks at Franklin High School, some additional swap card entrances about halfway down under safety for East Franklin, Iowa Valley, and also MVI. Those are actually all, those three schools are the same request. Those are swap cards, not fob locks. The ones at MVI are replacing old fob locks. That gym door panic, Mr. Shields, that refers to what you were discussing a second ago. As we, one of the reasons that we wanted to enclose that corridor from the main building down to the computer lab was so that we could better secure the gym. As it stands right now, you know, you can walk right into the lobby and access the gym. What we're gonna do is move that access beyond the front lobby, and they'll be able to access the gym out there in that new enclosure. So, visitors won't be able to immediately go into the gym.
Right.
Yeah, so that, we may be able to take care of that now. We've also included some fencing at Highland School. This would include fencing to secure that walkway that goes from the main building down to the gym, as well as between the main building and the middle school access or wing, and also the backside of the soccer field.
Can you put a new roof over that versus fencing it?
Well, we can add, how would you like to have it done?
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying it.
Yeah.
It isn't really a roof.
Right, that covered walkway.
It leaks like a sieve the whole distance.
The one from the main building to the gym? Okay. Well, I'm not surprised. One of the things that we do have on this request is a new covered walkway for the main entrance. I know you know what the issues are with that.
Yeah, it's pretty rough, too.
And we need to, I'll just go ahead and discuss that a little bit. We're gonna have to take up that concrete. As you know, it's peeling or cracking or...
Put salt on it.
Yeah, I think so.
It does the roof sleek.
Yep. And that roof, we had, Tracy went up there and spent quite a bit of time caulking the seams, and just after this last freeze, it was a really nice display of icicles up there. So, we're gonna have to do something with that, and that is a request that's in here.
On that, on the safety, Mr. Superintendent, just looking down the list, and this is just for the other board members, that Mr. Shields and myself and the liaison committee talked about. You know, it's just like talking about courthouse security. Once you find a safety problem and you address it, you better do something about it.
Yeah.
So, looking down the list, if you've got the same list, this is just, I think, what we talked about. The priorities was the classroom door locks at FHS, the swipe lock door locks, eleven fab fob locks, the gym door panic hardwire, and so I think the fencing and everything can be placed in next year. Can you, you think it's priority right now?
Well, you know, I'd hate to...
I mean, it is priority, but I mean, nothing like a, you can put the fence up, but the lock seems to me to be the big priority. Am I right or wrong?
I won't disagree with you. You know, all of those things, though, it just depends on, you know, which crazy person the judge was referring to. You know, you've got kids walking down the street, going to the gym, to the playground down there. If, you know, I don't think it's a good idea to have the level of access that we have to those students in that sidewalk from the main road. So, but at the same time, we may not have a threat up there. The threat may be at Franklin High School, where those classroom door locks are needed. So, yeah, it's, they're all priorities.
Chris, a quick question, please. These things, these items that are listed, are they, have they been prioritized by the school board?
No, sir. That's a good question. They have not.
Or is this just what they've been, what's been submitted?
These have been submitted by directors and principals. The school board has not met to see these yet. We just received these from the principals last week.
So, this is kinda like we're all data straight?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. But at our liaison meeting, Mr. Goldsmith is there, Mr. Gabe was there. They talked about, I think the most thing we concentrated on was the door locks. And Tracy mentioned, I think we all talked about the importance of being able to secure the buildings, you know, regardless. With that, with the two hundred and fifty being gone, we appropriated for that. Now, that does, we did get the mirrors at middle, the mirrors, cameras.
Those are starting to be installed in about two weeks.
At middle grade.
Yeah, they're on the way.
Lobby area, lobby area at Franklin High School, has that stabilized?
It, Mr. Woody, Tim can explain where we are with that. I think the electronics...
All the electronic controlled systems, the door locks are installed at Franklin High School. The security systems are all installed at Franklin High School. The integration of the security door locks. We have the perimeter fencing all installed there as well. The telephone system has been installed at Franklin High School.
I believe Tracy's working on some way to communicate from that lobby to the guidance office?
We still got some doors we might line up.
Or close.
Close, yes.
And there's a request on here for doors at Franklin High School. Have to look, find them exactly. But one of the issues that we ran into at Franklin High School was that several of those doors, especially in the main building, were wood-framed, and they won't line up so that the electronics work properly. They're bowed, the frames are bowed.
Same thing with door.
Door.
I see, and I may be wagering, but through the liaison, I see Mr. Maslin here. Where are we with the Macon Middle School upgrade?
I have, yeah.
Okay, I'm headed, okay.
Back on the, on the security that we had such long discussions about, I guess you all just had a school board meeting?
On the twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, yeah.
So, when could you have the, prioritize these locks and a request from the school board to this board? About, when could you have that ready?
We'll need to schedule a budget work session, I'm assuming.
Schedule a budget work session, we have to advertise it. So, within two weeks, so...
Just don't hurry. Your school's gonna be out by the time, it's just like, you know...
We'll get to work on that immediately.
At least you can have it by the start of next year, maybe. Okay. Let's just thank you for the topic that Mr. Sherman, I don't know.
Long as you make sure I understand. Y'all kinda concentrated on those security items that you...
That's right, on the safety, yeah.
...in the meeting, and then beyond that, looking for them to prioritize the rest.
Well, from that, we, most of our discussion was about middle grade school, which we're gonna get to. That's been on the thing. But some of these others, you see in structural, I mean, some of these things are gonna have to be addressed as the school board prioritizes them at different places. But what, I think what we all agreed on, there's nothing. And the fire marshal, the fire marshal reported yesterday, that now there's nothing more important than middle grade school. So, it's just like anything else, if something should happen, once you recognize, once you have another problem, you inherit the problem.
Correct.
So, we saw how them old schools, if anybody saw that arson on, over, how that school went up, just woof. So, you know, that's what we talked about. I just wanted to, Commissioner Gillespie, that's some of the things we talked about. And then, of course, Mr. Goldsmith brought up, that once we get, if we can get this off the floor on the middle grade, then to have a serious conversation, start a serious conversation about the high school, and, you know, is the school bond gonna pass? That would really benefit us tremendously. We'll go back on Valentine's Day, whenever that is, to have that discussion in Raleigh. So, but, so that's what we talked about. But most of it centered on middle grade, because that's where really it's, we, and I think Derek reported, so you go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Field. If, I'll call your attention to a couple of things under structural. If you go down about ten lines there, you see gym floor repair at Cartucia and Southmaken. We're having some bowing in the floors and some separation warping along the walls. So, that's two new items. The gym bleachers have been on there for a while. Just call your attention again to the track. You know, it's come to the point now where we, this, if we can get through this track season, that's probably gonna do it for that track at Franklin High School. And the question then becomes, what do you do with that track over there? Do you resurface the one at Macon Middle School? And if we're gonna move to Macon Middle School, what do we do with the track at Franklin High School? Do we take the, well, so what does that mean? Do we take the rubber coating off and leave the asphalt? Do we, do we take it completely out and just sew it in grass?
Whatever the safest thing is, probably.
Any of those things are gonna require some additional funding, and that's not including what we do at Macon Middle School's track. So, you know, there's just some things to think about with that track. Covered walkway at Franklin High School and Highland School, I mentioned earlier, the bulk of that would be for that, at Highland School, most of that is the concrete. Removing that old concrete, putting new concrete down, and then covering that walkway. You've got that nice entrance right there off the side of the street, and then you've got an older aluminum covering from the nice awning back to the main door. And that's similar to what we have at the back of the building, and also at Franklin High School in front of the cafeteria, and down to the bus drop-off and pickup area. We've got a, the transition at the cafeteria between the new covered walkway, the one that was installed in around two thousand and ten. And I'm not sure when that one was installed that's over there now, and she was outside the cafeteria.
The what?
The covered walkway.
Part of, I think there's one on your time.
Yeah, it's two thousand and ten.
And there's a little patch job done at the end of my time. It seemed like y'all got a handle on it there.
There's just, it's, it's aluminum, similar to the one at Highland. It's had several people on top of it, and some of them have gone through it. The transition between the two is not, not good. So, we need to consider that, or we'd like to consider that. The drainage issues at Franklin High School in two thousand and twelve, we had an engineer look at that, and that would include the student parking lot and the football field, which would include the track as well. An engineer looked at it and gave us a price of one point eight million dollars. That was in two thousand and twelve. We can probably do better than that with local contractors, but that's, that's what we had back then. The Fine Arts Building at Franklin High School is going on fifty years now, and I don't think there's ever been any major renovations to the Fine Arts.
Asbestos was the major thing that came out there.
And that, that was removed in eighty-six? Was anything else done of the, that removal? Was that a baitment or removal?
Removal. They removed, they went and scraped the whole place out, and sprayed that salvos in there. That salvos is just electric dust and dirt. The health department always threatens that.
Going on down the list there, we've got a repair and surface parking lot at Cartucia and at MVI. At MVI, that's a new parking lot, but we're seeing some pretty significant cracks. Some folks are tripping in those. I think that we can, our maintenance department can fill the track, fill those cracks, and then we can resurface and, for sealing the parking lot. Those exterior doors at Franklin High School that I spoke about, that's about a thirty thousand dollar bill, twenty-seven and nine. The sewage treatment plant at Nana Hala is still on there. You've seen that a number of times. Mr. Maslin would like to remove part of the basketball court that's between the baseball field and the Macon Middle School, and also fill in some pretty, very significant cracks over there in that, the asphalt basketball court that he has over there. The bus garage, we'd like to get power to the gas truck shop, as well as re-roof that building. We've got windows at Franklin High.
That is bad.
There's a, an area behind the main bus garage that they parked, they used to, I guess they used to park the gas truck back there?
Right. It's a two-bay, about two-bay sized block building with a, what do you say, gable roof, and they need power now, because they have no place where they can do, repair the bodywork, paint.
Wouldn't that come into school, is that just a new maintenance item?
Um...
Is this capital needs?
Well, either way.
Okay.
Window replacement at Franklin High School. We've also got some windows, fixed glass windows at Southmaken that we need to repair. Tracy's been doing a great job of using Duke rebates and some promotions through Duke to replace LED lights throughout our school system. Any questions about structure, capital outlay, before I move on to technology? As I said earlier, we've replaced about four hundred iPads on that five-year replacement, refreshment plan. Desktops, computers, those active board projectors, and servers and switches and that sort of thing. Tim, do you wanna add anything?
No, that six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars you see there is our refreshment to maintain what we currently have, is to replace the computers that are getting five years old or older. This past year, we started the year with computers that were ten to twelve years old in classrooms and in the hands of students. I appreciate that six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That really helped us move that recycled refresh along what we did. So, that was that, that six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars you see there.
Chris, were you mentioning the Williams donation, too?
I'm sorry?
Were you mentioning the Williams donation, too?
With, for the iPads?
Yeah, just so these gentlemen will be aware, if they're not already.
Yeah, Tim, give you the details of exactly how much that donation was.
Yeah, we had, we had a donation from, for the, for iPads at Highlands for the K through four students. That came from the Reading Council, I guess.
Literacy, Highlands.
Highlands Literacy Council, I'm sorry. That was about thirty-three thousand dollars. We were able to buy a hundred and seven iPads with that. We just got those in just a couple of days ago, about a week ago, and we're getting those set up for Highlands students, and we do appreciate that additional.
And we've got, absolutely. We have some other donors up there at Highlands that we wanna recognize at a board meeting in May. So, we wanna send you an invitation to that. Absolutely, yes. Very impressive. Very grateful for that. We have, also, the schools have requested, actually, at Southmaken, that's active panels for the new classrooms. Are there any additional, or is that just those six replacements on there?
Those are six panels for, yeah, for the classroom and computers and everything that goes in those new six classrooms.
Several schools have asked for iPad carts, or twenty iPads on the cart?
Thirty, thirty on the cart. And these are, these are requests from principals for additional iPads in their classrooms or in this building.
We need to provide air conditioning for the server room at Iowa Valley. It's overheating. We had a sound system request for Southmaken as well. You can see additional security cameras for Iowa Valley, Nana Hala, Franklin High School, East Franklin, and Union Academy. I've highlighted the fire alarm system at East Franklin because that... I've highlighted the fire alarm system at East Franklin because that one is a, a, a real priority. We're having some significant issues with that and very concerned about it. Cartucay J and Franklin High School also need, uh, fire alarm upgrades. Uh, school intercom paging clock system at South Macon and Cartucay J, we've discussed that in the past. Exterior speakers at Nana Hala School for if students are on the pa- uh, on the playground and there's a, an alarm or a lockdown inside the school, they may need to communicate with them. The Identikit system, this is for all the schools, uh, I believe that's elementary schools? Was it all schools?
It's all.
All schools. Uh, this is basically a, a visitor system. If, um, someone, uh, enters a school and would like to, uh, visit a child or pick up a child, uh, once they input their name into the system, they'll run through the, um, the sex offender registry. But they'll also flag any alerts that might be on that child's record, uh, and alert us that that child should not be with that adult. And it also makes sure that we are, uh, getting the, uh, the right student with the correct adult. You see two different, uh, furniture requests here. In the past, we've, uh, used a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of capital outlay and just, uh, used a formula to give our schools, uh, each of our eleven schools, an amount that they can use to purchase classroom, uh, furniture. Uh, Union, East Franklin, South Macon, Macon Middle School are all, all requesting cafeteria tables. And then you can see some, uh, some schools that have specific student, uh, desk or table requests there. Under maintenance custodial equipment, we've got a number of, uh, scrubbers, buffers, um, mowers and vacuums as well as heat controls for Cartucay J. And I wish that Tracy was here to explain, uh, how necessary that is at Cartucay J, but that's a, that is a concern. Uh, David Lightner, our child nutrition director, had several, uh, kitchen equipment requests, uh, water fountains, um, and that sort of thing for, uh, our child nutrition areas. Maintenance also requested a skid steer and a lift for, uh, changing, uh, uh, light fixtures and, and working on high, uh, ceilings such as in the gym, uh, uh, all of our gyms. The skid steer would save us a lot in terms of what we, what we spend out for renting equipment now. Randy has recommended that we, uh, purchase a seventy-two passenger bus as well as two smaller twenty-six passenger buses. Uh, we'd also like to add a car to our fleet. Some of our cars are, uh, over twenty years old now.
What, what do you do now, um? Can you put in a policy if a, if a school person wanted to take their own car, they'd get mileage because these cars are so high mileage? What, what was that?
Yeah, that, if, if, if we don't have a, a county car available, then we pay, uh, folks mileage and that mileage just went up. So it, it, it's a, it's a strain. I think some of those cars that we have now are, as I said, over twenty years old.
Yeah.
Or getting close to twenty years old and, um, have over, well over two hundred thousand miles. And if you look at, at the reimbursement rate, uh, compared to what we've been able to get out of those cars, reimbursement for mileage is, is not efficient. Any questions about that, that current, for that capital outlay request? Not with going to that, Macon Middle School?
You know, between now and, uh, when you prioritize the safety thing, if there's anything really on the structural that really, you know, that can't, that can't wait till the next, leave, let us know that.
Mr. Williams, Tim, are you aware of anything that, that we need at Franklin High School to get it up and running soon as possible?
When y'all can talk and you prioritize the safety, it would help. I think it would help Mr. Shields and to report, me and Shields will have to report back to the board. Anything and, and Chris can come back and Mr. Wh- whoever, if there's something on the structural that just absolutely won't wait till the, to the budget negotiations and we will take any consideration of that.
I appreciate it.
Now the big.
Yeah, you've got, uh, at the facilities review, I think you asked us to prioritize, um, our concerns at Macon Middle School?
I have taken this list. Uh, you know, we had, uh, we had discussed earlier that, that you had previously, we had discussed this with Novus, had gotten a proposal. I think it was the feeling of the liaison committee though, that we maybe wanted to look at and get another price from Mosley Architecture to see what they would come in and do this for. I have since provided them with the, uh, copy of the list of proposed renovations and they should have, uh, something back to me soon. I will co- touch base with Dan Mace, who is the principal architect of that firm, after this meeting today.
Mr. Turner, just to give you a report, Mr. Shields' consulting, uh, liaison committee with the school board, uh, and their maintenance department was also present. We feel that there's nothing more pressing at this time than Macon Middle School. If you go up there and really look through the needs that's there, I mean, it's from the windows to the roof. I mean, everything you see on this list that they submitted, uh, it's not a priority. They all gotta be done. There's nothing, I mean, what I don't see on here, I wanna make sure, is we did have a conversation about, uh, adding a building at the back, at the gym.
I thought this was for existing.
Well, you better do it. You got, we got one shot.
They put that on there, we talked about.
What we talked about, uh, and we can, and you can separate that into two things, Derek, Mr. Manager will separate that out, but, but everything that you see here is, is, for this particular, at the middle grade school, and Mr. Shields can talk about it too, and, and anybody else on the school board, there's nothing on here that's, that's, that is wasted money. The windows have literally leaked since that building was built, we think. Uh, the fire marshal was there yesterday. If you read his report, uh, we're gonna have to move on pretty quickly, Mr. Turner. I mean, it's never windy any field, almost.
Sounds like you're having a ball rolling.
Yeah, so.
So what's the schedule for getting?
I'll touch base with Dan Mace.
We'll keep it down the road again for eight months, being careful.
Yeah, I got to touch base with Dan Mace today. Um, and again, he's the principal architect from Mosley. We did, we already had, we already had a quote back from Novus. We just thought it was a little bit high. So, we're looking at this and, uh, I'll, like I say, I'll touch base with him today and report back to this board on the twelfth of this month.
I'll, uh, after this meeting, I'll send you something on the, the, uh, new building that Ron's got about behind.
You remember we had that conversation?
Yeah, about the, the, the.
Were they having a locker room?
Yeah.
And, uh.
You got a bed, you got a, your pad out there.
If you're gonna put a breezeway or how we're gonna connect it and, so, I think this would be the, it'd be up to the board, but if we're gonna.
You get time to do it.
If, if we're gonna do it now, it just seems like, at least, let's look at it.
Well, if you're gonna transition from the high school for track to middle school, you got to have some facilities there. But I think another thing that became aware of last year is the number of athletic activities that take place at Macon Middle School after school. Uh, can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
I think we have every outside sport, front high school, that's football and track.
And you're about to get a track.
And, and you're, you're looking at middle school, JVs and varsity.
We have nine practices on the spring.
Right.
Between three softball, three soccer and three baseball. Our school JV and varsity.
And they're, they have to come in there at different times. And that's, that's nine. That, that's, that's a pretty good list.
And they work in track practice now.
Right.
Just for this board's, uh, a question I had wrote down, is the track, existing track at middle grade regulation?
Much tenders, yes.
It is.
It is.
So.
Frank High School is not.
That's right.
Too lo- too mild and it turned too sharp.
Yeah, okay. So, but it is regulation. And, uh, so that's a different discussion. That's in, that would be a different discussion than the building itself, I think.
Well, I think you're right. I think one is emergency, one is kind of a.
This renovation, uh.
First priority.
Yeah.
And I think that new building, if you, if you're building a new structure, that's gonna have significant, uh, you know, you'll have a lot of upfront costs in the design and the planning with that. Uh, unless it's just a, you know, plain.
But if we can sort of see what size we're talking about and, and just, and so this board can at least have a, an idea.
Right.
What you specifically mean.
And if you're gonna make a loan at middle grade, you're gonna have to put that, that, the school's gonna be covered anyway, so.
Do you, do you think, uh, could we put some, if they can get us a square footage, could we, do we, can we put some construction boxes on?
We didn't get that far. Well, yes, we can.
Do you give me?
Oh, yeah. Oh, these renovations? For the most part, yes. There's the, everything on here, you can, the windows, uh, the roof replacement, everything, we talked about that. Uh, the only thing you're gonna really limit is the band room. Uh, that's gonna have to have some work done on it. But I, the question was, Mr. Shields, do you think most of this stuff will be done and they're not disrupting classes?
We, we've done a lot of renovations at, at, I, I was part of renovations at Nana Hala and at Franklin High School. Uh, kids are pretty resilient. Um, they can work, they can work around a lot of this.
But our, the goal would be is if we could get, if everything works great, we're always about as good as they are, if we can work this in, to be ready to start the major stuff the day school's out. And that would be ideal.
Be really helpful. I, I do have.
Good luck for that, my Lord.
Good luck.
We'll call Biffy.
Right now.
We'll call Biffy will get us in.
You're very ambitious there, Ronnie. I don't.
Well, Biff can do it. We'll put us to the front of the line.
He was retiring though.
I know. He ain't gone yet.
Is he not gone yet?
Let me ask you a question. Would it fit in here, part that we just, uh, looked at? For that repair, we're talking about the, 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 the repair of the, of the, this basketball course that's out there, but we want to do a practice football, which if they had a locker room building that we're talking about looking at, then you would, they'd be able to stay at home there to follow and do that. So, would that maybe ought to be on this part perhaps?
Well, that's what we talked about. If you, you know, this is a, this repair, this is a must list. This list is a must list. That's gotta be done and, and, and I, for this board's consideration, I think me and Mr. Shields had that discussion, Shields can speak to it too, that, that building hits new construction compared to renovation. And, but we still need to have it.
Yeah, the field would be new construction would, would go along with this because you'd wanna be using it, that building at that time of year.
We can, we can add it to the list and if you need to pull it up, you can. That's fine. Yeah.
We just sort of need to know the general size and so you sort of get that Mosley do the little square foot takeoff on it.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Right. So do you want that, you want me to report that back on the twelfth as well?
Well, what does the board need? Cause we said at this meeting today, we would sort of get, make sure that the ball was rolling. So, what, do we need anything from the school board, uh, Mr. Counsel?
As far as a general consensus, developing a consensus to do something or to actually start doing?
Yeah, we need to have that as part of, as today's minutes. What do we need? We've got the chime in here, we got the school board representatives, we got superintendent. See, before it was just the liaison committee and I think we've agreed to move forward with the architect or get a price from them and then we have to vote on that. But do we need anything from the school board while we have them here?
I, I don't think so. I think y'all have a fairly good meeting of the minds as to a consensus. It gets down to the exact request of what's, what the school board wants. Yes, we are going to need that. Yes, they, they will also have to, uh, either approve the architectural work as their own or have architectural work done. Uh, that, that's on the school board to make those decisions. We don't make those decisions for them. They make those decisions. Also, we'll have to talk to the school board a little bit about how we're gonna go about financing this. I mean, is this gonna be paid for out of, it, are we gonna borrow money to do this or?
We'll have that discussion when we see the pricing, I think. That's right. You know, we talked about maybe taking some out of the fund balance and some borrowing, some depending on how much money you're gonna get.
I, I think y'all probably done what you need to do for right now. Derek is gonna report back on the twelfth as to some matters and maybe at that point in time, we'll have a little bit better, better feeling.
You see, so a lot of this, a little bit of confusion, I guess, when we left it before as to, as to what was being done and what wasn't being done. We just wanna make sure when we leave today that we all know what, yeah, what we're doing and so it won't be another six months or.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be appropriate for, uh, Derek to, to basically articulate to you what he understands his marching orders are between now and the twelfth and, um, and then report back on the twelfth and Luke Baldwin.
Mom, after the liaison committee meeting, again, uh, the marching orders were to, to find, seek alternate pricing on this. I've since provided that to Mosley. They have not gotten to, back to me with an alternate pricing to conduct the work. They're not supposed to get back to me with a, with a takeoff cost for what the project's gonna be.
No.
They're gonna get back to me with a price to perform that for the middle school building. Now, I understand my marching orders from this meeting to be, uh, Dr. Baldwin's gonna be sending me, uh, some square footage estimates and, and potential locations for a new facility, uh, to be looked at by, uh, again, do you want, should I submit a proposal to?
Should you ask Novus?
Should I ask Novus and Mosley? Do I ask just?
Cause we started down this road with just the renovations and now we're adding a building potentially, so.
But that's really two different things, so.
But if you do a loan, you own.
It's gonna take a whole lot longer.
So do you wanna just, let's report back on the twelfth about this, about this?
Yeah, but we'd like to see what, what we come back with on the new construction.
Okay, and then you can provide, could you provide with some drawings and square footages?
Yeah.
A rough app?
Why don't you and I, uh, talk early in the morning?
Okay.
About exactly what, what scope the commission's thinking about with, in terms of the new structure, um, and, and the track and the new football, practice football field, what, what you're thinking. And then we'll get together and send you, uh, what you request.
Has Novus provided any, um, project cost estimates?
No.
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 No, Novus, yes.
Well, not.
Novus has provided cost estimates for this, for, for this, for the renovations.
This list, it don't compare exactly to what they did.
But it's two years old and there's new stuff added. So we thought, uh, uh, Novus' is, is takeoff for the one we did a year ago, excuse me, what, two years, it was a year, was a little bit high. So we went to Mosley with this revised.
So we're all on the same, we just wanna make sure that Dave and we leave are on the same page.
Well, I'll get with him in the morning.
I'll get with him in the morning.
Make sure that we are on the same page.
I think, and I think many of them, it's Thursday, March, Friday.
Yeah, Tuesdays.
Tuesday is just a.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I think Scott, Scott has a pretty good idea of what you're looking for. He can go and get started on that. Now, you and I'll come, uh, have a conversation tomorrow.
I'm just wanting to get by and then Kate, Kate get you.
See, the way our meeting was set up, I mean, February be gone.
Yeah.
March will be gone. And here in April, school's out in.
May.
May, so. That's the one, yeah. We just need to make sure there ain't another three or four months.
Thanks, Dr. Baldwin.
Uh, can I give you a heads up on what we're looking at with, in terms of our operation budget? It'd be rough. My promise will be as quick as I can. And what we know right now about our operations budget for next year is like, it's looking through a really, really murky glass right now. We've got, uh.
What's new?
Uh, I, I, when do you, I, I appreciate the information that y'all sent me from the County Commissioner Association. What's the feeling about when we'll have a budget?
Well, it may be Christmas.
It won't be July.
No.
Um, so, we're, we're concerned about the impact of class size requirements, benefit increases. Uh, the principals have requested, uh, additional teacher at Franklin High School, a guidance counselor at Union Academy. We do have a, a request for four K-three teachers that I believe will be addressed through the, uh, state, as they, uh, give us additional funding for program enhancement teachers. So I, I believe that we'll be able to address, uh, the K-three teachers, uh, through that additional state fund. And my concern is the TAs that will go along with the K-three. If those are K-one classrooms, the state's not providing additional funding for teacher assistance at this point. So, we may have to address that, um, locally somehow. Um, another concern that we've got in our school system that we're seeing more and more of, and we, Ronnie, we've had several conversations about it, and that's trauma impacting students, uh, that have, uh, serious emotional, uh, issues that, uh, many of them are living with their grandparents. Parents are incarcerated or, or other things. Um, we may need additional mental health workers. The state did provide. The state did provide grant funding for additional school psychologists this year. Um, social workers, guidance counselors. We're not sure exactly what we'll be looking at at this point. Uh, I know we've had several productive conversations with Derek and Carmen Rocco about mental health resilience in possibly building, uh, or, uh, adding school-based health clinics, uh, throughout our schools or, or, uh, camp, or. Social workers are working with the Sandy Hook Project to provide, um, additional support for these students. And Ronnie's got us, uh, hooked up with Via Health, uh, Nancy Cantrell and Catherine Shields-Holm are meeting with them, uh, very soon. One of the things that, that keeps coming up throughout our schools is our classified employees. Two things have hit them, um, within the past few years. First, they're not included in a local supplement. In order to, to provide a local supplement for these employees and, and, you know, they're some of our, they're the backbone of our community and they're some of the lowest paid folks in our community as well. To provide a two percent supplement for them, which would come in December, along with the two percent supplement for teachers and teacher assistance, it would cost us about ninety-six thousand dollars. Another impact that we just learned about today, or the possible impact that we just learned about today is that, um, you may remember last year the state, uh, instituted a minimum salary for state-paid employees, that they set it at about thirty-one-two. But when they passed that legislation, they excluded school employees. Now, I, I, we, we, I think we know why they did that. Had they included, uh, school employees in that, it would have increased our local budget by close to a billion dollars. Now, I just got an email today. Did you get that email or did I pour it to you? Um, from State Employees Association and they are gonna lobby to include school employees in that this year. So, don't know how that's gonna, uh, play out at this point.
See, classified employees are your hourly wage.
Yeah, that's your, your, um, maintenance workers, your custodians, your receptionists, uh-
They're your hourly wage, your non-salvage. Okay.
Right. We also have a number, as, as the budget, you know, reduced after the recession, we cut, uh, several teacher assistants back from, si- uh, teacher assistant positions back from full-time to part-time. If we brought all the, uh, of our TAs up to full-time, that would, uh, add an additional one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We, uh, we're really pleased with where we're, uh, the progress that we're seeing with our STEM program. We'd like to see that continue. Uh, one of the things that, one of the challenges that we'll be faced with this upcoming school year is finding the funding for our STEM coordinator, Jennifer Love. She's doing an outstanding job. She is a tremendous, uh, instructor, educator. She's also a great community liaison for the school system.
Did we fund that last year?
Well, we, we-
We had a grant.
And, through Golden Leaf.
Golden Leaf is still-
And that, 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 this was the, yeah, is this the last year or was last year? Current year's-
We started the current year with having the first dollar.
Yeah. And we were using, was that federal funds or using the last?
Let me just say one thing to the group up here, the Business Advisory Council, which I have the opportunity to serve with. The STEM program, that, and the Business Advisory Council includes your CEOs that'll be interested and stuff like that. They're really behind this. There's, uh, a lot of, a lot of things going on out here within the schools that pertains to STEM that they definitely wanna see that go on. And so, just wanted you to be aware of it, that this is not just a fluke thing. In their minds, it is really a valuable thing, uh, from a, uh, industry, uh, work with those kids and seeing how they enhance and it's, it's, uh, they're, they're going good. And so, uh, that, that group, we meet quarterly. And, uh, we met the other day and, uh, it's really a, a lot of the information you see here came out of that committee. Of wanting to make sure that you personally-
It did. There's a specific, yeah, there's a specific, I specifically addressed that down, uh, to the list there. Uh, we, we also are trying to provide additional staff development opportunities for our teachers so that they can become, uh, more adept at STEM instruction. Uh, we're looking at the North Carolina, North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teaching as well as RISA. Hopefully, these will not, uh, require significant, uh, local resources to provide that, uh, training for our teachers. Uh, we do budget, um, for, uh, to help teachers with the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards, uh, application process. Uh, that's about two thousand dollars, uh, for application. We provide five hundred of that. We do that through Title II, which is, um, improving teacher quality. Just, just to let you, uh, understand what we're, some of the things that we're doing. That instructional security software, that's that Identikit program that I talked about and you can see the link there if you will, uh, if you'd like to view that online. Some of the, uh, many of the new security, um, projects that we've entered into this year require software, uh, that Tim and his department will have to maintain and that's, that's the cost that you see there. Uh, the STEM, uh, instructors, the Business Advisory Council would like to see us add a teacher at Mountain View Intermediate and also a teacher at Macon Middle School. They, they recommended using, uh, current personnel at Macon Middle School. Mr. Maslin, after looking at it, you know, he can probably do it with current personnel. If you, if you wanna do it right, we need to probably add a teacher over there.
What we're going to, let's see, you had, uh, what's that? You called-
The wheel.
Plug a wheel?
Mm-hmm.
Or you're gonna plug this in one of the topics of the wheel?
Yes.
Okay.
What, Dr., what was that again? The Business Advisory Council recommended hiring a teacher?
They recommended, uh, and that's in your packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, STEM supplement.
I've got your eye here. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's, that's fine. I should've mentioned that earlier. Um, and then the, the last thing I need to make you aware of is with the tier adjustment to Macon County, the, uh, the state has looked at that and said that now, uh, they no longer are required to fund early college to the level that they were when we were a, uh, in, in a more dire economic situation. What we're looking at, uh, or what we're being told is to expect a seventy-five, seventy-five thousand dollar reduction in our, uh, funding for early college.
Is, is that on this Business Advisory?
It's under the Business Advisory, M E C.
It's on the very, it's the very lifetime.
Yeah.
But it, it, it sounds like what we was there last week, that the teachers are gonna get a good pay raise. They appear. You never, nothing, nothing ever, it's always, but it certainly looks like.
Which end?
Both.
Oh, really?
Minimum. They're gonna do a minimum pay, pay fifty-five thousand.
I really appreciate your time. I really appreciate your support. Um, thank Mr. Bill, uh, Mr. Shields. All, everyone for, um, all this to do for our schools and for our students. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Chuck.
All right, moving right along. Dr. Thomas, welcome. Fire safety training facility updates.
Good afternoon. Do we need take five?
No, no, we're good.
Okay, good.
Gotta go, gotta go.
Gotta move quick.
Lloyd did.
Uh, wanna thank you for letting, allowing me to take the opportunity just to visit with you real quickly and to bring you up to date to where we are, uh, from probably just about a year ago at this point in time, when we discussed the fire safety training facility. Uh, we hired an architect, designed Stuart Cooper Newell and Jim Stumbo is the architect of, uh, record that has been working on the project with us. We did get to a point where they did the cost estimation, uh, at that point in time, drew, uh, did the design, walked the property, came out. Uh, as you recall, we have two point seven, uh, one, two million to fund the project. Uh, and to date, as the project was requested when we visited with y'all, uh, his cost estimation was four million, thirty-five thousand and some change, uh, which was approximately one million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand short. Uh, I am not here today to ask you, uh, for any of that. I am just giving you an update as to where we are, uh, with the project.
So, let me, let me just make sure I understand that something.
Just a second.
The first estimate we got-
He's got his pills here.
Okay.
My neck's aching. It's full.
Yeah, you may need another one. Go ahead.
How, how was our first estimate so bad out?
Well, uh, we all talked about value engineering, tried to tighten it up and we asked the local, um, vendors uh, to give us some cost estimates, which we did and we adhered to, uh, y'all's request to try to do that. And, and just as an example, um, site prep at one point in time was well over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than what we had originally requested when we, uh, I believe talked to Penlon. This project, we were able to narrow it down. Now, we're at about eighty thousand dollars over, okay? Cost comparison, site prep is up. The unknowns that we didn't have in there with taxes and sub-bonds that, um, were part of the project, then that's two hundred thousand dollars. General contractor markup for oversight of the, uh, Bullock's building coming in is eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we're under on site prep. Uh, we water lined, hydrants, sewered, stormed, uh, are that area. We're about forty-five thousand dollars, uh, based on the architect's, uh, cost analysis. Uh, Stuart Cooper Newell, they're out of, um, Gastonia area. Uh, being a state-
I think we did a proper and adequately work despite those numbers going in. And we got local contractors that we have used in the past and have some sort of relationship with and trust. And, and we gave them, while we didn't have plans, and we said, we need to pad, you know, that type of conversations. And for that, we came up with the number. And when the school hired the architect, those numbers were not consistent with the numbers that we got.
What time you had his thirty percent?
At the time, nor are they consistent with more current numbers we have from, from the book, so.
What about the building itself, probably we started with? Are they pretty much stayed the same, Paul?
No. They, um, the building itself, at one point in time, our numbers were like three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The architect numbers is seven hundred and sixty-six, sixty-seven thousand. Yeah, it's three hundred and ninety, almost four hundred thousand dollars difference.
Cost square footage?
Cost for square footage under the architect is two seventy-five, two, you know, right in the neighborhood.
Yeah, this is the same deal as we talked about before.
Metal building.
The two seventy-five is for a metal building.
Two seventy-five is just what we-
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars square foot for a metal building.
Twenty-seven hundred and ninety square feet. Two bay fire station.
I'll do it.
We've had a lot of volunteers.
So that's-
The, the burn building itself is what we always talked about.
The burn building itself.
It's about one point-
Building before was.
Uh, originally was like one point two-seven, but now, since it's been a year later, you gotta add about twelve to fifteen percent on top of that, plus you got your taxes on top of that, because we're not exempt on that. So you're about a million and a half, so you're about another three hundred-
About two hundred thousand.
Yeah, three, probably.
Which, I can see that. And I'm sure you can too, where things are going, but.
So what now?
So-
Okay, now I understand.
So what now? Is, is you're right. We pushed the pause button because of where we're at and what our cost analysis was. And in those conversations, there, it's been brought in conversation to me about, um, the understanding that there may be another option. What does that option include? And, and one of the conversations that had been brought to the colleges, uh, the possibility of the National Armory, uh, facility being, uh, donated back or given back to, uh, Macon County. And would that National Armory facility, based on our master plan, because at one point in time, we had like eight and a half million dollars to expand public safety and training for a facility out at, at the Grove Center. And how does this change the master plan? Would we be able to maybe use that? That would give us Curtis and his team the possibility to grow and expand his programs. It's about fourteen, fifteen thousand square feet, which would provide opportunity for his program to grow, uh, storage, classroom space, um, put the simulators in there that they have for the firing range simulation. And then, could we put the burn building on that same location? Under the-
The new one.
The new one?
Yeah.
The Bullock's building? The, just that?
Breaking Bullock's.
Yeah, just the Bullock's building. Uh, the requirements of your fire marshal, state fire marshal is like two point three acres. There's six acres there. Uh, it seems feasible that it would work. Uh, all that would detail would have to be designed out, again, with the architect and designer to see how that would fit on their- The institution, the college did. We went through it, the process based on qualifications and what they do and then, uh, we take that to the board and, and they do presentations to the board and then we, we approve that, board approves that.
Let me say this, I, I, and then is, we went through the process of selecting an architect as you normally would do it. The, so I see as a problem, Carl could jump in, cause he went to New York and looked at Bullock's building with me, is that they had never, they've not ever seen that before, have they, Carl? And so-
No.
It's- The architect had never seen it?
We're, we're using-
Who's not, never seen it?
They've not seen the, the Bullock's brand structure and, and what entails getting it set up and put on site. And I think they fluffed it up so.
But I think they've seen something similar. They have never actually-
Peers.
Done it within their company.
That's all there is to it. And, and the costs that the architect is associating with that are in line with building of Rick and more people. I mean, I think that's just-
Well, let me, let me do one, add one thing, because we have pretty, I mean, we pushed the pause button and we, we were pretty hard on the architect because we felt like we could get this building built, visiting with local contractors for about that one fifty-ish, one seventy-five mark, maybe on the outside. Yeah, the mid, just the middle, the two bay fire. Um, I did visit with Western Carolina University because they have in the arts, in-house architects and they also have cost estimators. Um, they felt like, coming back, that somewhere around the two fifty mark was probably not out of reason and rationale for this project. But again, and we called State Construction, uh, I did, along with, uh, William Brothers, CFO, and we asked a lot of hard questions and there are some requirements from the state side that sometimes just are not necessarily followed at the, at the county side. So the county can do things differently than what we're required to do on the state side. And so, um, however, and if the bond money, we had one point four million set aside for the bond money, which is state money. If we're gonna be able to use the bond money for the project, it has to be a state project from that standpoint. So, anyway, that's kinda where we're at, push the pause button. We wanted to take a look at the armory. Curtis and his team, myself, uh, instruction, business office, we met over there on Tuesday of this week, walk through. It's, it's, it's a building that's very usable and feasible for use for the public safety and training, provides an opportu- opportunity for immediate expansion, as long as we can set the burn building or the Bullock's building, the building itself on that. We feel as though, uh, the two point seven million that we have allocated right now, uh, I mean, the only additional cost we've, I mean, that's what we have is the building, just the burnt building to be placed on that piece of property.
Two birds and one stone left there.
And it keeps the campus together. It, you know, we have a master plan, but it's a living master plan. It's fluid.
We won't take ownership of that thing till winter, Derek.
Well, the, what, and what he's referring to, just for those that, that are not aware, um, the National Guard Armory's consolidating its offices. This region will be moved over to East Flat Rock and in doing that, they're vacating all of the, uh, National Guard Armories, uh, that were branched out here in western North Carolina. One, of course, happens to be ours that is located here. About fifteen thousand square foot facility, as, as Dr. Thomas alluded to, on about six acres. But you know, also there, the pad back there is, you know, it's currently a parking area where they store their Humvees and, and whatnot and, and equipment. As we, as we move forward though, you know, we, we need to make sure of what kinda title that we're taking to the property. And, you know, there'll be some legwork for Chester there to be sure that, that we can, can do th- these things that, that we're proposing to do. And, uh, you know, then as you mentioned with, and I'm gonna steal the words from Ronnie, I used to think I knew a little bit about a, a lot of things till- I used to think I knew a little bit about a, a lot of things till I started working with architects and engineers. But, you know, there, there too will be, can we fit the, the building on the property and, and will that, everything with that work out? So, it is an option, but there are still a lot of ifs and question marks with that.
I don't think the property will be vacated till twenty, January twenty twenty.
Yeah, January of twenty.
So you're pushing, pushing the pause button for ten months.
That's maybe, that's maybe.
And that's maybe.
They said that it-
And the way government works, it could be eighteen months or longer.
Has the metal building just, has it just gone up that much in this period of time, or?
No, sir.
Are they looking at, doing something different? Yes, the fire burn building.
Well, the fire burn building has not gone up significantly, about ten to fifteen percent-ish with taxes and, or-
That's two hundred grand.
You're, you're talking, you're talking about the metal building, that's the two bay, it was the, that is what has gone up supposedly significantly. Their cost estimator, and Ronnie, you're a construction person and you know better than I do, I just get emails that try to tell me what I don't know. He is claiming that concrete, when we bid our other metal building prefab, has gone up forty-seven dollars a square foot, which was, we were-
Square yard.
Or square yard. Came up forty-seven dollars a square yard.
No doubt about that.
Okay.
Behind the armory, there's a two bay metal building that they are not using. The, would have to be renovated, but renovating metal buildings. They've lost your doors.
Yeah.
What about the bond, will it carry, if, if, if we do keep the pause button, will the bond carry on?
They did not have any, they did not have a-
Sunset on that?
Yeah, sunset on that. As long as we're in the middle of that and the state construction knows what we're doing with that, I think we're fine.
Is there any indication when that conveyance would be made to the county?
Possibly January of twenty twenty. It's when that, when it's trying to take place. Now, going back to the cost, I think that, what was the cost of the recently Southmacon, wasn't it about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot?
It was over three hundred?
Well, the cafeteria part was gonna be more expensive.
Yeah, I think that was-
But again, that's bricks and mortar.
With the cafeteria, eliminated that, then it came back down to.
Yeah, but that was, exact, I know, that's what, you know, that's bricks and mortar construction at a, at a school.
You know, and another thing that this opens up the door to is, you know, it puts a, it puts a burn fire training facility on existing campus where another curriculum there. It's a fire training facility between UPS and Rock Creek. It, it, it opens up six acres that the county would get back. That, that library can be used for some other uses that might have fit better.
It's just way from that river.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Is there, is there anybody we can ask about what sort of conditions or covenants or restricted covenants might come with the conveyance of that property?
We've already been, we've already walked through the property a couple times and, and had some conversations with their, with their leadership at the National Guard Armory. They are working on providing some additional information. But yes, I do have a contact that we could find out what-
I think that'd probably be very wise to look at that on the front end, because otherwise, we may be spending a lot of energy if there's gonna be some restrictions or conditions that would prevent the issues. So, let's find out what we can and can't do.
Sooner than later, yeah, okay.
I, I think another thing, Warren probably could talk about this, we started this project thinking about it, we, we're trying to about create a magnet to get the firemen something that they could work in, that they felt safe in. You said it a while ago, you said, when you know the problem, then the liability is yours. Two years ago, they warned us about the burn building now. But we talked about trying to enhance something, so you'll get more volunteers to come into your program. When we talked about that, was that still one of the things we're trying to do, do upgrade, so more people will come into the program? Is that right? 'Cause we're in that need right now from what I hear, trying to get continual volunteers to work within a firefighter department, and for those young people who have to go away from here for the training, it was expensive.
The existing structure that's out there, the existing burn, I'm, I'm more suggesting just more to have to check it out or somebody. But it still could be of use to, to-
Just couldn't burn it.
Couldn't burn it, but you can use it for repelling, you can use it for, uh, search, search-
Searching.
Scenarios and all that, and even law enforcement can go out there and use it for whatever means they want to as far as scenarios to go into the occupied building or drug searches or whatever.
They might be able to use a smoke machine.
Well, has, has the board, Carl has been choosing here as a territory, see, what's the board willing to burn? Your board, it's a college.
We just briefly discussed this with the guys. This is a, that's a whole board.
We did, we talked about it a little bit, January board meeting.
Be favorable, we, 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 we see this as, as a way of, of community college, being able to accomplish something that, that is a goal of ours, to expand public safety training, without having to come and ask you for another one point three million dollars, which I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to that anyway.
The Southwest Board is very open.
Right. We wanted to do a win-win situation and not have to, I mean, if we can get fifteen thousand square feet and be able to do immediate type program expansion, you got thirty-five, forty thousand square foot building on the master plan at two hundred dollars a square foot, may not have to come back and ask you for that.
Driving range will still be there with him, so, you know, it keeps keeping all that together.
And then, the, the big issue with the, in addition is that can't burn an old one building, that, you know, the, the underlying issues that's in the flood plain. So, if you use it for what they're talking about, floods, let the water go through it and go in there and wash it out and see into it. So, so we're not gonna have this continual, unless it floods enough to knock down, and then we'll haul it off.
So we just have to basically wait till we find out.
It's, it's a timing issue.
We can go ahead and do some preliminary, see if there's any title restrictions, see if there's a, and then, you know, that, as it gets closer, that window of, of when the actual transfer is gonna take place will probably get a little clearer.
So you would have to spend that money out of fund balance that you, that recently said during this, like, year.
How does that one year conveyance fit with the colleges' plans? They're talking about a, a, probably a year where there's conveyance. Which, to me, in my mind, translates you're kind of on hold doing anything, it's gonna get that.
Right, no, that, yeah, that's, yeah, and, and when I spoke to State Construction, she said, Kareem folks is who's our contact person, but the wait, the, yeah, the pause button is the right way to go right now. So, until these discussions can be formalized and finalized.
I mean, at some point, there may be a point where we're absolutely sure we're gonna get the title, but it's gonna be six more months or eight more months.
And, and that, you know, and, and at that point, it may make sense to spend some money. But until you've got that certainty, you know, spending a quarter million dollars on architectural fees and that sort of thing raises some, some issues, at least in my mind.
And it not, it's not, again, it's not necessarily gonna be a year, they did indicate that, you know, or it's not, we'll know exactly when the transfer's gonna come before next January. So we can have time, once we can start getting a little clearer picture, we'll be, go ahead and get back to it.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they can give you that information soon rather than later, I'd pass that on to Don. Yeah, it's just that continual conversation.
You gonna try to get the-
Trying to get a winner.
Join you.
If and when that time comes, we would, we would, 'cause it's right there next to the campus and we don't have a lot of expansion room there either, so, unless we go up.
Well, now this building here, did Macon County give them the land historically for that, uh, who owns, let's see?
For the armory?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you buy it back, you don't have to pay a lot of money, I mean, for that.
I'll give it for free.
Yeah, you're getting back.
You have to put some kinda money in.
No, no, no.
It'll be gifted back.
It's, yeah.
Gifted back.
It's gifted back, um, at no cost. Then we do the same, we would do the same thing as what we did with the six acres out at Siler Road. Then we just probably flip-flop it all, but then we'd have to get appraisals that go through the same state type, what's it worth, what's that six acres worth, supposedly, so the county gets that credit on the books.
This acreage out of the industrial park, is it laid better than in the other year?
Overall, it does, but they've built it up and then they've got steep slopes, so you can't really go by the total though, 'cause the total goes, shows you about every eight yards or eight feet. And they built it up and it goes down pretty, pretty steep, so, but I think it's more workable, so.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Appreciate your patience.
Absolutely, thank you all very much.
All right, Mr. Manager, presentation and budget calendar.
Yes, sir, I have it right here and I will distribute it. Of course, today is our February seventh, mid-year budget kickoff, looking at setting something up with the department heads for February fourteenth. They'll complete that budget, they'll complete their departmental budgets by honor before March fifteenth, turn those back in. March twenty-fifth through April fifth, basically, will be review of the budget. The schools will submit their request on the fifteenth. May fourteenth will be when we present the recommended budget. And then, uh, May fifteenth, until the, until the, the public hearing on June eleventh, we'll discuss. And then, you know, we can adopt it on June eleventh or recess the meeting, continue the meeting, and then adopt it sometime before July first. As long as we get it in there and it's balanced by July first, they'll be all right with it.
All right, thank you, Derek.
Derek, there's one question on the, for next Tuesday night, have you got MPP on that, the request, that, uh, you and Chuck had that discussion?
Chuck called me wanting some information and I passed it along, but I hadn't heard from him since.
He, I think he's wanted to get that money.
The MPP, the report that I forwarded to y'all to, to make sure y'all had read, or not read, but-
No, they're gonna ask for three thousand bucks for that bond max, to, to max that grant.
I knew he was applying for it, he wanted the information to apply, but-
And that deadline is, the health department was supposed to file, they, they refused to give it to the health department, so they offered the MPP.
Right.
And so-
Okay, so he is coming Tuesday night, we'll add that on, I hadn't heard back from him.
So, I mean, I think that we can get out the health department budget.
Sure.
I think the deadline is, is nearing, I talked to him today and I, I just wanna throw that out there. This was a grant for how much, it was two hundred and?
See, yeah, and the health department had gotten it previously, but they, they didn't, no longer got it.
No, they, they were refused from the health department because of submissions and, and then, so they offered the MPP and we certainly, it was child development, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So we didn't wanna lose that, so, but MPP don't have that in the budget, so.
We can certainly add them on the agenda.
You need to have the conversation.
And I'll call Chuck.
You need to call Chuck, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, goals and expectations, Board of Commissioners, if anybody's chomping at the bit, Carl? Mr. Shields, anybody?
We, we had a list of some things we wanna talk about, but I hear what you're saying when you talk about goals, but within that list of nine, we had nine items.
That's the planning board for Tuesday.
But it's our goals and stuff, with, within that, I mean, you're thinking that the planning board would take, let's say, number nine and use that as, we'd use that as a goal. Broadband was one of them, right? Where I can't remember what, uh, number nine was.
Yeah, it was just, what that was is, I had polled all y'all of the things that was, you thought was important, the planning board work on, and that, that's on our agenda.
It's on our agenda for Tuesday.
To discuss and prioritize those, I mean, I think everybody had a lot of great ideas.
Well, I, I still think the, um, North Carolina Association County Commissioner put out their list the other day. I thought that was a good list, their goals and stuff. You feel good when you develop a goal, when you got that whole group with you. I did go back and look at that, but-
I've got to, I'll raise a whole copy of that, but, you know, but I think Carl and I've shared that planning board a long time. I'd like to see our planning board do some actual planning, not just work on ordinances and, you know, and this space needs, so it seems to me to be the perfect time for him to be a part of it.
They need a reward for their compliance.
Let them real do some real planning, yeah.
That compliance.
But back to your question, it looks like we sort of, our goals, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is we've pretty much been outlined. And we're very pleased with the reports we're getting about the financing and, and what we have, but we have some big decisions to make. And I think our goals is, I think might as well just have to wait a little bit till we get to final thing, but some things we need to go ahead on, that we put, we kicked the can down the road enough. Of course, security being one, and, uh, and getting, and, and middle grade school, that is our responsibility. And, uh, but I think all in all, you know, that our staff does a wonderful, uh, job.
I agree.
Uh, uh, also, and it's been brought up a few times, I, I still think somewhere need to do a refocus on Nana Hala, and their situation there, and their library and stuff like that. I haven't seen any type of plan, I've talked with, uh, Ken in here today. And I think, uh, Paul probably has a better idea of what's, I've never seen anything on a drawing. We, we seem to talk quite a bit about it, but I've never seen anything, how to get something off the ground. Or, uh, I've heard about cutting on the bank and stuff like this, making it two-story, those type things right there at the school where that's located today. But I, I never seen anything, we don't get it off the ground, so I, I'd like for, a, a goal is to, is to look at that, their need there, and, and see if we can do something for that community there, and what some of their needs are.
Mr. Shields, just to interject, and, you know, to let the other board members know as well, that our county facilities in Nana Hala, the EMS base and the rec park, each have been included in this space needs analysis. And they'll be, so we'll, we will be receiving the, the, the library as well.
Okay, good, 'cause that's what I couldn't find.
Yes, sir.
That part in there.
Carl, you wanna go, or you want me to?
I, I mean, I agree with Ronnie, I think our goal would've kinda been laid out. Of course, we've just got some hard decisions to make. I do think we need to continue to look at efficiency and effectiveness of government. Um, and I think, I think county staff does a great job. But I think there's always improvement, not, not just improvement on saving money, but improvement in services and level of services that they provide. So, I mean, you know, a lot of big numbers thrown out, the things that we need to do. But I think we still need to kinda keep focused on the services that, 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 that folks is funding this whole thing to have, as far as expectations we can provide, and provide those as efficiently and effectively as possible.
I th, I think another one would, maybe a planning board thing, I think it's easy to lose angel medical center, the focus on that and what that's gonna be. And I, I think my goal would be to, to stay involved, trying to keep up with, uh, with the Dogwood Foundation, those type things like that. I don't know about y'all, but it seemed like when you, when I, I was at the hospital there the other day, a lot of people come and ask you questions because you're county commissioner. And I'm sitting there, I feel I'm void of some of the answers. Either I'm not staying involved in it, or we're not being included in it. And I, and I don't know where the role is, I don't know if there's a line there that we stay on one side and they stay on the other side. So I don't know if y'all ask the same questions, uh, like, what's gonna happen to the hospital once it's, things happen, you know? So, I, I think it's just some- So I, I think it's just something you keep your eye on to see where this is going. I think we're expected to know whether we're in the know or not in that loop, I think we're expected to know.
Some of those things that we don't know, they don't know. You know, the, the sale just has closed. Go through that discussions about the old hospital, but, and they don't have no timeframe for a, a building you are building on appearance, so. A lot of those things, we just don't know, we're sort of at their mercy, just like for the sale. We just hope that they'll do what they say they will, and, you know, that's sort of out of our.
And I saw where they went from five years to ten years now.
The attorney general put that in.
All right, Derek, I'm gonna be a lot more specific, so sorry, I'm gonna hone in a little closer than thirty thousand feet. Um, you and I have discussed this, I'm just gonna post it verbally to the public, and that is, I think that we need to clean up uh, some of those lingering construction accounts, uh, some money accounts that we had discussed. So I think Peak's Creek was an example, that there's still a chunk of funds sitting there that might not ever be able to be spent. There's some housekeeping there that I think can be done to potentially move some funds back into our fund balance. Especially when you look at some of the capital projects, uh, that you're looking at with the school, uh, thinking about your health insurance fund, courthouse security, no telling what else we're gonna be coming up on. I think there's some loose funds there that should not be able to be picked up, and I know you and I have discussed those, so. I know your health insurance has, uh, been weighing on you, uh, how you handle that, and it'll continue to for a long time. Uh, I, I speak for me only, I have not spoken to these other gentlemen about it. Uh, I, I, you're, you're not gonna bother me personally if you pull some out of, uh, uh, fund balance or somewhere to help supplement that account so that it might be steady moving forward. Again, you're the manager, you have the great staff, and I'll trust y'all make that decision. Just making a suggestion from my point of view. Obviously courthouse security, uh, as I said earlier, is a priority and it's really the only item that I wrote down. But I, I think we need to get that moving, uh, uh, as, as I said earlier, I don't think I could live with myself knowing that we could have made a difference and we kicked the can down the road because we're worrying about five thousand dollars or something, uh, this is an example. Uh, the only other thing which will be coming up next week is, uh, uh, we've got, uh, we're not, we're not gonna have any choice except to move our dog park, so we'll be receiving that next Tuesday night. I'm not expecting that to be a huge amount of money, but, uh, if I want it on your radar going into the budget year. Those are really the only two, uh, items that I had. Uh, I know it is a revaluation here and from reading the confusion on social media, uh, to the newspapers about how Richard presented the revaluation from, uh, to remain revenue neutral about raising our tax rate, et cetera, I'm, I'm gonna have to trust your judgment. I mean, I was sort of, uh, I, I had a, uh, a, a great dream that we're gonna be able to hold it flat at three, four, nine. But after listening to what's going on at the school and what's going on with our security, I've had officers in, in your operations, as you preach into the choir, but they're gonna obviously be going up. So I think you're gonna have to make that, um, recommendation on what it takes to run our county safely and efficiently, and then we're gonna have to have that hard discussion. On whether or not we can make it happen, uh, but, uh. Contrary to what's passing around, taxes have not been raised. That discussion, that discussion will happen in June. Questions from our, from you for us?
Again, I just, on behalf of the employees, uh, our health insurance, our, you know, the, this board giving the two percent coal is, we just really appreciate that, the, uh, the importance that, that you all show through your decision-making that, that you place on, on the county employees and, and as a county employee, I can't thank you enough for that. Looking forward to, uh, moving into this budget process.
Well, that's your asset, your employees. Anything else, gentlemen? Got a couple other items, we have a budget amendment, uh, y'all should have it in front of you.
Yes, this is a budget amendment for sixty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Last fiscal year, the Soil and Water Conservation received a grant from Duke Energy to do the Blue Ways Initiative of the canoe access. And even though they received the money last budget year, they didn't get the project launched, but we're at a point now to launch the project. So this is just appropriating fund balance, but of, of course, with the revenue received last year, it rolled into fund balance, so.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Unless there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll reconvene next Tuesday.
No movement, gentlemen.
Got a motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?